Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. If I ask members of council to take their seats, we will start the meeting in one minute. If members of the public could also take a seat in the gallery, we will start in a minute.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Ottawa City Council meeting on the 8th of March, 2017, International Women's Day. It is my pleasure to welcome members of the public who are here today to watch, as well as those watching online and on Rogers Cable 22. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as councillor Chenushenko introduces our very special guest who will sing the national anthem. If you could remain standing, and I'd ask councillor Chenushenko to introduce our special guest from Hopewell. And Hopewell is special to me because my two nieces graduated from Hopewell Public School. It's a great school in all Ottawa South. Councillor.
Thank you very much. Bonjour tout le monde. It's a great pleasure to welcome the Hopewell Public School this morning. Grade 6 class of teacher Mireille Gouelferris and other teacher accompanying them, Charlotte Egan. Hopewell Public School, as many of you will know, is one of the city's older schools, founded in 1910 on Hopewell Avenue in old Ottawa South, my neighbourhood. Hopewell School has a long history of strong music programmes. Today, it's not an actual sort of school choir or band, a class who is performing for us. Please join me in providing a warm welcome to our performers.[814.88][814.88](Applause)
(Music) O Canada, our home and native land. True page of love in all thy sons common. Car ton bras s'est porté l'épée, il s'est porté la coeur. Ton histoire est une épopée de pire pleiades explore. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[880.88][880.88](Applause)
Well, thank you very much to the students from Hopewell Public School. Merci beaucoup aux étudiants de Hopewell Public School.
Thank you very much to the Hopewell students from old Ottawa South.
At this time, I'd like to invite Liane Nepirkowski to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award presentation, and her councillor, Le Conseiller Paul Sett-Cartier, Riley Bracken.
Riley Bracken.
Liane, welcome. And Liane has a number of students and friends and family here, which is terrific. And thank you, councillor, for being with us as well. Liane's commitment to volunteer coaching goes beyond creating a winning attitude with her players. She instills the key values of loyalty, equity and respect for their teammates and their community. The influence of respect, inclusion and teamwork is derived from Liane's work as an inclusion coordinator teacher at St Peter's Catholic High School, which focuses the inclusion of high-need students in every aspect of school life. At St Peter's High School, Liane also lends her leadership skills as head coach of the senior boys rugby team. Liane met également ses talents en leadership.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. If I ask members of council to take their seats, on va commencer la réunion dans une minute. We'll start the meeting in one minute. If members of the public could also take a seat in the gallery, on va commencer dans une minute. Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Ottawa City Council meeting of the 8th of March 2017, International Women's Day. It is my pleasure to welcome members of the public who are here today to watch, as well as those watching online and on Rogers Cable 22. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as councillor Chernoshenko introduces our very special guest who will sing the national anthem. If you could remain standing, and I'd ask councillor Chernoshenko to introduce our special guest from Hopewell. And Hopewell is special to me because my two nieces graduated from Hopewell Public School. It's a great school in all Ottawa South. Councillor.
Thank you very much. Bonjour tout le monde. C'est un grand plaisir. Good morning, everyone. It's a great pleasure to welcome the Hopewell Public School this morning. Grade six class of teacher Mireille Goufferris and other teacher accompanying them, Charlotte Egan. Hopewell Public School, as many of you will know, is one of the city's older schools, founded in 1910 on Hopewell Avenue in Old Ottawa South, my neighbourhood. Hopewell School has a long history of strong music programmes. Today, it's not an actual sort of school choir or band, a class who is performing for us. Please join me in providing a warm welcome to our performers.
Well, thank you very much to the students from Hopewell Public School. Merci beaucoup, les étudiants de l'école.
Thank you very much to the Hopewell students from Old Ottawa South.
At this time, I'd like to invite Leanne Nepirkowski to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award presentation and her councillor, le conseiller pour cette cattie, Riley Brockington. Leanne, welcome. And Leanne has a number of students and friends and family here, which is terrific. And thank you, councillor, for being with us as well. Leanne's commitment to volunteer coaching goes beyond creating a winning attitude with her players. She instills the key values of loyalty, equity, and respect for their teammates and their community. The influence of respect, inclusion, and teamwork is derived from Leanne's work as an inclusion coordinator teacher at St Peter Catholic High School, which focuses the inclusion of high-need students in every aspect of school life. At St Peter's High School, Leanne also lends her leadership skills as head coach of the senior boys rugby team. Leanne met également ses talents en leadership.
At St Peter's High School, Leanne also lends her leadership skills as head coach of the senior boys rugby team.
...values has translated into the team reaching several city championships, as well as the players' participation in fundraisers and community charity events. In addition to the high school sports scene, Leanne has extended her volunteer efforts as head coach to the Ottawa Beavers, Banshees Rugby Football Club, and other provincial and regional teams, including the Carleton University Men's Rugby Team. Her passion and commitment for winning attitude, loyalty, equity, inclusion, and respect with youth and athletes extended to her establishing an ambassador programme that better connects the Parent Beavers and Banshee Rugby Clubs with junior players. Leanne also works tirelessly to remove barriers to rugby for her players. She leads fundraising initiatives for financially challenged players who cannot afford registration and equipment. On one occasion, she helped a player who qualified for the Eastern Ontario Championship but could not afford the registration, equipment, and travelling costs. With her dedicated efforts, she was also instrumental in establishing the John Kelly Memorial Award and a rugby tournament in commemoration of John Kelly, a St Peter student who tragically passed away. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Leanne for her many contributions to the local rugby community across the city, as well as for her outstanding leadership.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Leanne for her many contributions to the local rugby community across the city.
Sir councillor Brockington, to present to you with this meeting's Mayor's City Builder Award for such great work, and it's great to have many of your students with us here today. Congratulations, Leanne, and keep up the great work.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you for welcoming my family, players, colleagues, teammates, and most importantly, my students, to City Hall to help me accept this award. I'd also like to extend our thanks to councillor Bob Minnet for his support of the Ottawa Beavers Banshees Rugby Football Club for the past two years. I've enjoyed coaching the rugby for the past 15 years because of the wonderful people that I'm surrounded by. The Ottawa Beavers Banshees Rugby Football Club is filled with the most balanced group of athletes who exemplify inclusiveness, tenacity, fun, and a fighting competitive spirit. My St Peter Knights, they are the core of who remind me daily how big an impact a high school coach can truly have. I'd like to thank every member of my rugby family for allowing me to be a part of their careers for the past 15 years, and I definitely look forward to being involved for many, many more. Thank you.
So why don't we... We'll get all the students to come up, and we'll get a group shot. And councillor Minnet, come on, because is St Peter's in your ward or Steve Blais? All right, well, you come out. You're a graduate, too. Come on, the students. We'll get these great athletes. Let's give these athletes a big round of applause here. Well, thank you, Leanne. It's an inspiring story, and it's great that so many of these young people and members of the rugby club could be with us here today. Our second and final presentation is to commemorate International Women's Day. I'd ask councillors Deans, Harder, McKenni, and Wilkinson to join me at the podium. Welcome.
Stand to your left.
Far left, yes. But you're on the left looking this way.
I need to know I'm on the right.
Today, on March 8th, we join people from around the world as we celebrate International Women's Day.
Today, we join people from all around the world as we celebrate International Women's Day.
People know, International Women's Day was originally established in 1977 by the United Nations, which officially called on all countries around the world to inspire, celebrate, and honour women. This year's International Women's Day falls on a council meeting date, but that is not the only reason that we take an extra opportunity to celebrate and honour women. There are a number of additional historical reasons for doing so, and they're still relevant today. First of all, 2017 marks the 150th anniversary of Canada as a nation, and it seems important that we take a moment to honour the role of Canadian women as part of that overreaching celebration. Secondly, many of you know that this year marks the 100th anniversary of women gaining the right to vote in federal elections. Third, there's a lesser-known historical fact that in April 1917, the Government of Ontario gave the right to vote to some women, some women, in provincial elections. Finally, we proudly note that this year marks the 130th anniversary, 30 years prior to women obtaining the federal vote, that women earned the legal right to vote for the first time in a municipal election right here in the city of Ottawa. Which is pretty... Very few people know that. Do you see? We're always ahead of the federal and provincial governments. It is with that historical backdrop that International Women's Day here in Ottawa celebrates the economic, political, cultural, and social achievements of women while marking a call to action for accelerating gender parity. On International Women's Day, we have the opportunity to pay tribute to inspiring women everywhere who have made a difference in the lives of others and to celebrate the women who have led and continue to lead the way forward towards a more equal and just society. All over the world, women have helped to bring positive change, not only through leadership in public office, but also their everyday actions of courage, outreach, and action.
All over the world, women have helped to bring positive change not only through leadership in public office, but also with their everyday actions.
The city of Ottawa hosted an International Women's Day breakfast. Over 350 women from all across Ottawa making it the largest turnout since I first started hosting this breakfast back in 1998. It was truly an honour to attend this breakfast with so many women who have made a significant difference here in our community and in some cases, in our country, as well as internationally. We had the Minister responsible for the status of women and the Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, who were our guest speakers. This year, Canada's theme for International Women's Day is equality matters. We continue to... We need to continue to work towards gender parity and ensure the contributions and accomplishments of women are recognised. We also need to take a moment today and every day to think about what we can do as individuals to support each other towards that goal. We're fortunate here in Ottawa to have many female leaders in our community that younger generations can look up to, including our recipient today, Leanne. And we have four exceptional female role models who serve on our city and our community through their work on city council. Although we are, of course, happy to have these four councillors, I think all of you would agree that we should be striving to increase the number of women representatives at all levels of government, including at the city of Ottawa. This morning, at the International Women's Day breakfast, we heard a number of inspiring speeches that asked us to mentor young women in our community. I agree, we need to collectively give women space and thrive to support their efforts so that they can not only run for political office, but they can achieve success however they define it.
And we have the opportunity to have four women who are devoted to our community and our city.
International Women's Day to recognise the wonderful contributions of councillors Harder, Wilkinson, Deans, and McKenni, and thank all of them for their tireless work to move our city forward. I'd now like to present councillors Harder, Wilkinson, Deens, and McKenni with a proclamation declaring March 8th as International Women's Day. And I think we have the copies here. And just... I know a number of my colleagues are aware of Daughters of the Vote, which is a wonderful programme that has been established by Equal Voice. At about this time, 338 young women are taking their seats in the House of Commons, and the five party leaders, two of whom are female, are going to be addressing these young women that have come from every riding in Canada to represent their community at this special 100th anniversary of recognising women's right to vote in 1917. So on behalf of all of your colleagues around the table, thank you for your continued leadership, not just for women, but for all people of Ottawa. And I'd ask councillor Deens to say a few words. Councillor.
Well, good morning, everyone, and Happy International Women's Day. Just picking up on what Mayor Watson said, I had the pleasure of attending a dinner on behalf of Daughters of the Vote last night, and it was truly an inspiring event to see 338 young women from all across this great country of ours come together and be prepared to take a place in the House of Commons. And I think it's just so inspiring to see that happen. And I know this is the anniversary of the 100th anniversary of women's right to vote, but hopefully that will be something that will continue in perpetuity because I think inspiring young women in that way is just so important. This International Women's Day is particularly significant for me. This past year has been, I think, to say the least, difficult for many women. Last year, on March 8th, we were celebrating a new kind of federal government led by Justin Trudeau, a self-proclaimed feminist, who had, just a few months earlier, appointed 15 women to cabinet, fully 50%. When asked why he had made that groundbreaking decision, he famously proclaimed, "Because it's 2015." Women who have strived for equality were jubilant with this declaration and with the leadership that declaration demonstrated. It seemed as though we had taken a giant step forward in our quest for equality. At the same time, our neighbours to the south were, it seemed, on the verge of electing the first woman president of the United States, an election that was certain to put women's issues on the forefront of the public agenda. It was an empowering time for women, both at home and abroad. It felt like we were finally seeing the progress that we have collectively worked so hard to achieve. That elated feeling quickly dissipated in the months leading up to and after the November 8th election in the US. The rhetoric in the media about women, immigrants, and people with disabilities was alarming. And many of us were concerned that this attitude would soon permeate the border. As I am sure we can all agree, the thought of that happening here is unacceptable. I knew that I could not be a bystander as turning back the clock 50 years on attitudes toward women is not something I was prepared to accept. I am very aware that the shaping of attitudes in the US has a direct impact on Canadian women. It felt... I felt it was imperative that we made it clear that this behaviour and language would not be accepted here in Canada. So I went to Washington, as did councillor McKenni, to participate in the Women's March and to stand up for the rights and freedoms of all people. And by the way, we went at our own expense. Witnessing that so many people are prepared to stand up and fight for our rights certainly gave me a lot of hope. It was a very inspiring thing to participate in. Between Washington and many other cities the world over, millions of people turned out, that's my count, not Donald's, to deliver a clear and unequivocal message that we will not let our rights be eroded. It restored my faith and gave me hope that the people ultimately will prevail. If this is silver lining, it might be that we were perhaps becoming a tad complacent. Women in recent years have enjoyed greater access to jobs and pay equity than in the past. This turn of events was, I think, a collective wake-up call for all of us that we must be ever vigilant. When I made the decision to go to Washington, I had no idea that something remarkable was about to happen right here at home, led by a public servant who had no history whatsoever of public protest or dissidence, an Ottawa March unfolded. Originally, thought to be a few hundred in size, I'm pretty sure, Eli, that's what they told the police service, 8,000 Ottawaans, mostly women, took to the streets to speak out and speak up. And I'm pleased to say that two of our colleagues, councillors Tierney and Leeper, participated in that march. The Ottawa March was remarkable in its size and scale, but perhaps even more remarkable in its message, that women right here at home, mothers, grandmothers, daughters, sisters, wives, public servants, business leaders, and everyone in between will join the fight for women's rights. I was fortunate enough to have had the lead organiser for the Ottawa Women's March, Catherine Butler, speak at my Women's Day breakfast this morning. Catherine is a passionate woman, and it was that passion that created a catalyst here in Ottawa. And I think it's now up to all of us to build on that momentum. This year's theme for... United Nations theme for International Women's Day is be bold for change. It's clear to me that we, as a city, need to be bold. We need a stronger and more sustained focus on women's issues locally. And so, Mr. Mayor, I offer you my suggestion that we seek ways in which we can address the concerns that women in our city are feeling, as evidenced by 8,000 women turning out to that march. And I would be most happy to help in any way I can to lead any effort in that regard. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognising your female colleagues this morning and for proclaiming International Women's Day in the city of Ottawa. And to all of you, be bold for change and Happy International Women's Day.
Well, thank you all, and it was great the Hopewell students were able to be here for the two presentations as well. Roll call, madam deputy clerk, please.
Conseiller Minnet. Councillor Midic.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor O'Shaughnessy.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
You see.
Councillor Shirelli.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans. Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Neusbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenni.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Conseil Clucci.
Present.
Conseil Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffat. Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
I'd also like to point out to members of council that this is the first council meeting for our new general manager of planning, Steve Willis, welcome. We won't have any too many tough issues on your first day, but we very much look forward to working with you and thank you for accepting our offer.
Thank you for accepting our offer.
...in February 2017, confirmation de la réunion le 22 février 2017. Carried. Declarations of interest, déclarations de conflits d'intérêts. Non-communications as... as listed, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion pour ta présentation de rapports, conseil Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Monnet, s’il vous plaît.
That the report for the city clerk and solicitor’s office entitled Status Update, councillor inquiries and motions for the period ending March 3rd, 2017, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 19, Item 1, Recommendation 7B and C, Environment and Climate Protection Committee Report 13, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 21, Planning Committee Report 40, and Transportation Committee Report 21 be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 22 due to the time sensitivity of the matters contained in this report, as the next city council meeting is not until April 12th, 2017.
On the motion, carried, adopté. Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 19, this was the deferral from the midterm governance, and councillor Harder and Nusbaum have a deferral motion. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that this is before us is because at mid-governance, the motion deferred it to the first term of, first quarter of this year. And I’ve had a discussion with councillors Moffat and councillor Nusbaum, and myself, with regard to where we are, what as a city we’ve done, what more should we be doing? And we’ve already, are leaders in Ontario in how we work with our communities and the industry. And certainly, that has been evidentiary in this term of council, where we have a number, many, many different ways that we do, everything from sponsor groups to the urban design review panel, regular public consultations. At the end of January, Mr. Smith and Ms. Snedden and myself invited an equal number of Federation Canadian, Canadian communities and the industry in to talk about the work plan. That’s something that we haven’t done in the past. So we are already doing a lot. The three of us want to have some time to connect with other people in the city and make sure that they feel that we’re on the right track. So we’re just asking for this to be punted through the fall, so we have the time to do that.
Great. And I think also we have a new general manager planning it, give him an opportunity as well. So on the deferral, carried.
Carried.
Thank you. City clerk and solicitor, greffe municipale et avocat général, status update, councillor inquiries and motions for the period ending le 3 mars 2017, received. Our committee reports, rapport des comités, l’environnement et la protection climatique, item number three, status update on the air quality and climate change management plan of renewable energy strategy, energy evolution, carried. Item four is light rail transit. We have a number of motions and brief remarks by the general managers, so we’ll come back to that item. Item number five, long-range financial plan transit, it deals with item four, so we’ll hold that as well. Item number six, brownfield grant application, 200, 230, and 260 steam line, dry, street, demand de participation au programme de subvention pour la remise en valeur des friches in the ressourdes, 200, 230, et 260 rue steam line. Councillor Cloutier, I believe, has a technical amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, merci Monsieur le Maire. The amendment simply deals with the fact that a, there was a company name change. It does in no way implicate, impact the eligibility of the property owner. And thus, the motion is therefore, be it resolved, that all references to the registered owner of the subject property and report, as stated, be amended to reflect 1384673Ontario Inc.
On the technical amendment, carried. On the motion as amended, carried. Thank you very much. Item number seven, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 22, rapport numéro 20 de comité des finances et de développement économique, 2016, statement of remuneration benefits and expenses paid to members of council, received. Item number eight, disposal, disposal rather, of 1463 Prince of Wales Drive to the Boys and Girls Club, c’est un...
That’s 1463 Prince of Wales Drive.
Great partnership. Item number nine, update revitalization of Byward and Parkdale Markets Project and amendments to Parkdale Market Program Bylaw 2008-448 and Byward Market Program Bylaw 2008-449.
Can I just make a guess, Mal?
Consulier Fleury.
Mr. Mas, simply give a bit of a heads up that we will be coming with the governance portion at the next Fedco meeting for the markets governance. So councillor Leaper and I have been working on that with staff. So this, this only addresses this year’s market season. We’re coming back at Fedco next meeting for the governance portion.
Right. Okay, on the report, is presented, adopté, carried, thank you. Planning Committee Report Number 40, rapport numéro 40, comité de l’urbanisme, official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment, part of 300 Goulburn Forest Road, modification en plein officiel et au règlement de zonage en partie de trois cents à chemin Goulburn Forest. Councillor Harder and Wilkinson have a technical amendment. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it’s of a very minor nature, and both councillor Wilkinson and I agree with that. And it’s just a technical discrepancy that we need to correct in recommendation number one and the text of the associated official plan amendment. They’re just two small areas, and they need to be designated general urban area and urban natural feature to facilitate the proposed zoning bylaw.
Okay, any questions on the technical amendment moved by councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Wilkinson? On the motion, the amendment, carried.
Carried.
On the report as amended, carried. Item number 11 is zoning bylaw amendment, 175 Main Street, North Village, modification au règlement de zonage, 175 rue Maine, Village Nord. This is in old Ottawa East, in case there’s any confusion, carried. Item number 12 is official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 333, 343, and 347 Preston Street and 17 Aberdeen Street, modification en plein officiel et au règlement de zonage 333, 343, et 347 rue Preston, et 17 rue Aberdeen, carried. Transportation Committee Report Number 21, rapport numéro 21 de comité de transport, examen de mi-mandat plein sur le cyclisme d’Ottawa, carried. Item number 14, new right-of-way patio program and evaluation of street-side spots pilot program. We have a motion by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Fleury. If you would like to introduce that, councillor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is, just, it refers to the right-of-way paddle patio permit issuance for, for speakers on patios. And all this does is catches a small omission that, that we didn’t catch at Transportation Committee, too, so that any new patio within thirty meters of any property zone residential or mixed residential commercial. So we’re just adding in the mixed residential commercial.
So this, just for members of council, there’s a slight change, as the council indicated, from what we’ve received on item four, we’re adding in the words mixed-use residential slash commercial. That’s the only change. So this allows, I believe staff supports this, Mr. Willis? Yes. Okay, so on the amendment, carried. On the main motion, carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda at this time? On the bulk consent agenda is presented, order de jour pour approbation en bloc, adopté, carried. Okay, so we will head back now to our item, stage two, light rail transit implementation project definition and procurement, mise en oeuvre de l’étape deux au train léger sur la définition de projet, excusez-moi, et le plan. So we have Mr. Mancone and Mr. Swale are here, along with other staff. They’re going to give a brief overview, because we had the full presentation at committee. And then, does anyone have any other motions than the four, sorry, rather than the one, two, two that I have right now? I have one from, sorry, those are the wrong ones, I apologize. I have one from councillor Harder and Egley with respect to connection to Barhaven, one from councillors Cadri and Hubley with respect to Moody Drive park-and-ride, one from councillor Egley and Leaper collaboration with Gatineau, and one from councillor Blay and councillor Kakish with respect to the washroom facilities at a non-terminus site. Does anyone have any other motions at this point? And do all members of council have these? So what I’ll do is I’ll just ask each member of council, where is councillor Harder? Where, I just want, so every member of council and the members of the public know which motions are before us before we ask Mr. Mancone. So if you want to move your motion, councillor Harder, we’ll, we’ll go to councillor Cadri while in the interim. Councillor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and this motion, as you mentioned, is seconded by councillor Hubley. And basic gist of the motion, Mr. Mayor, is to ask staff to go back and study the opportunity or the possibility of a park-and-ride at Moody Drive with the extension of the LRT to that area. And, I mean, we’ve got pressure in the West End on all our park-and-rides, so I’m just looking for another avenue for commuting, for the residents in the Far West to come out to maybe Moody Drive, you know, with their vehicles, do the park-and-ride thing, and move on to the LRT from there. So there should therefore be resolved that staff be directed to explore opportunities for a park-and-ride to be located at the Moody Station with consultation among all the large landowners in the immediate vicinity, including leasing opportunities with the National Capital Commission, and be it further resolved that staff report back to Finance and Economic Development Committee by the end of 2017. So I’m looking for support on this motion along with councillor Hubley, because I feel that this would just complete the transit network for the Far West End up to that point, up to Moody Drive, and then beyond that, it’s moving hopefully to Kanata and to St. Paul’s area beyond that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Egley with respect to Barhaven. Councillor?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that I was there, I didn’t realize you were going to do this so quickly, but I’m pleased to introduce this, and I want to thank councillor Egley for putting it forward at Fedco last Friday when I was at Guelph. So with regard to the future of LRT in the city, I’ve had a lot of people, obviously, in my ward say, you know, what about Barhaven? And, and I’ve always been able to stand up and say, I have the Southwest Transitway, we have that, that is important, it’s segregated from the vehicular traffic on a road that is, even though it’s four-lane, is way beyond capacity. But where it’s weak is where it dumps the segregated buses into the middle of one of the top three worst intersections in the city, which is Woodruff and Hunt Club, right at the sportsplex. It does have a dedicated bus lane that takes it down to baseline, but in order to get to baseline, they have to actually cut across the traffic and into the center. What I want to see happen is have staff investigate what completing the Southwest Transitway, so keeping it on the west side of Woodruff Avenue and taking it that short distance from Hunt Club to baseline, so that when the LRT comes there, we’re able to come up with a plan and potentially have it funded through support from various levels of government, or all levels of government, so that we would have a true dedicated BRT. And when the time comes in the years ahead, when we convert that to LRT, it will be seamless. Without this step and without this investigation, that’s not possible. So it is a bit more comprehensive, it says, you know, how do we, how do we include other things that may benefit? This is a look, see, and a plan that we would undertake discussion in the next TMP.
Great, thank you very much, well, well said. Our next motion is from councillor Egley, seconded by councillor Leaper with respect to Ottawa-Gatineau collaboration. Councillor Egley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I’m not going to go through all the whereas’s, but the essence of this motion, and I’m very pleased to bring it as the chair of the Transportation Committee, is to recognize the significant number of Ottawa residents that travel back and forth every day to work on, on the Quebec side, to work in Gatineau. This, this is a link that I think would be important to thousands of our residents if we can make it happen. And the only way we can make it happen is through continued dialogue with our counterparts on the Quebec side. So this motion does two things. First is be it resolved that council direct staff to continue to work with their counterparts in the city of Gatineau to explore potential enhancements to public transit and active mobility connections between Ottawa and Gatineau, including but not limited to the future use of the Prince of Wales Bridge to inform the next update to the transportation master plan. And further be it resolved, the council asked Mayor Watson to formalize the exploratory discussions already initiated by both mayors aimed at improving the rapid transit experience for residents of both cities, including but not limited to the potential future use of the Prince of Wales Bridge for rapid transit and active mobility, with the goal of establishing next steps and reporting back to the progress of these discussions before the end of this term of council. So this, this is obviously a difficult discussion, we’re two cities, two provinces, a lot of moving parts. In discussions with the mayor, he’s fully prepared to take on those discussions on behalf of city residents, and he and staff have received positive messages from, from the government and the staff on the, on the Quebec side. So I’m urging everybody to support this. This is a motion that impacts on thousands of our residents. As I say, there are residents from all over the city that make that trek daily to and from Gatineau for the purposes of working primarily for the federal government. And if whatever we can do to move towards making that transportation day for them easier, more efficient, faster, cleaner, everything that goes with that, will only start with these discussions. So I’ll urge you all to support this motion so that we can move forward on this other piece of our transportation network. Thank you.
Merci. Our final motion that we have is with respect to public washrooms at Plaistore Leans, because it ceases to be the terminus station, obviously, when we go farther east to Trim. Councillor Blay, seconded by councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You explained it very well. I’ll read the motion. Whereas during consideration of stage two light rail as transit implementation on February 24, 17, Fedco directed staff to investigate the installation of washroom at Plaistore Leans station, report back at the appropriate time. And whereas staff have reviewed the transfer volumes and the cost of the installation of a washroom at Plaistore Leans station, and determined that the transfer volumes will be higher than the stations at Bozville, Bayview, Lincoln Fields, and Trim, all of which have public washroom facilities, and that the installation of public washroom facilities was anticipated in the original scope of the stage two Confederation Line East expansion and can be accommodated within the current budget. Therefore be it resolved, the council approved that the functional design of the Confederation Line East extension be amended to include public washrooms at Plaistore Leans station, on the understanding that there will be no additional capital budget pressure resulting from the change. Plaistore Leans is today and will remain for some time the busiest station in Orleans, and as such, I highly recommend that council support the addition of public washrooms to that station.
Great, thank you very much, councillor. So we’ll ask Mr. Mancone to give us a brief presentation of what’s before us, and then we’ll open it up for questions and comments by members of council. Mr. Mancone, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The journey that brought us here today began in 2013. On November 26, 2013, council unanimously approved the city’s transportation master plan, which sets out the priorities for transit and transportation investments until 2031, in accordance with your affordability plan. That TMP that you approved identifies stage two LRT as a cornerstone of your priorities. Stage two is about a single-city program that brings light rail west, south, and east. On July 8, 2015, council reconfirmed its commitments and placed stage two at the top of your term of council priorities. And at that same meeting, you unanimously approved the stage two LRT environmental assessment and functional design report, which laid out the EA process for stage two, including the system functional design, and you approved the business case for the project. You also provided budget authority to begin the important work of the preliminary engineering work. And the city manager and the mayor were given the authority to secure provincial and federal government and other potential funding partnerships for the project. You also approved two additional council recommendations. The first was to achieve trillion revenue service sooner than the original estimate of 2023, and the second was to assess the feasibility of providing a rapid transit rail solution to Kanata. rail solution to Kanata. On September 1, 2015, you approved a report on the procurement strategy to secure an owner's engineer team. Under the leadership of Mr. Swale and his staff, along with a dedicated team of professional engineers, train and track specialists, planners, geotechnical engineers, legal specialists, P3 advisers, real estate staff, procurement staff, and finance staff, they developed a comprehensive, professional plan that is built on all aspects of your direction. The plan involved extensive consultation and dialogue with many stakeholders. The team held 27 public-facing meetings, and in addition to those, staff held many more meetings with individual stakeholders, residents, and impacted property owners. Those 27 meetings included 10 open houses for all the alignments, connectivity studies for all the alignments, numerous information sessions, updates, and neighborhood-specific meetings. In addition to those public meetings, staff responded to many questions and suggestions and made themselves available for follow-up meetings. All of the council questions raised during the Fedco meeting of two weeks ago have been responded to. The plan with Stage Two is the largest and the most extensive and detailed infrastructure work program in the history of the city of Ottawa. At its peak, it involved 200 professionals from across Canada and U.S. working on the plan. Mr. Mayor, the report that is before council and is recommended by staff meets every direction and council motion approved by council. It meets the affordability plan that was presented to Fedco, and as noted in the report, if you approve the recommendations, it allows the team to move forward into the competitive procurement process for all three extensions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and I are pleased to take any questions you may have.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Manconi. This is obviously a very, both historic and exciting day for the city and its future, and I want to commend you and your staff for the excellent work that they have done bringing us to this stage over the last four years. Appreciate it. So questions and comments by members of council? Councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much, the staff, for all the work that they've done on this report and the session that we had online last week as well, I think, went really well, and I think Chris Swale did a really great job answering those questions and showed a really solid grasp of the file, and it was nice to see that. I just have a couple of questions. First question with regards to the residents in Barhaven. I know councillor Harder and Egli are bringing the motion to address the western side of that, but I also want to touch as a sort of the interim measure with the Barhaven Riverside South rapid transit study that was done in 2013, and if you can talk a bit about that, and especially thinking of the eastern part of Barhaven, in terms of how those residents may, after Phase One and 20, Phase Two in 2021, can tap into the benefits of the Bozville Station and what plans are in terms of BRT and how they can benefit from that in the short term?
Yes, that study work and that BRT is an important component of your overall master plan, and I'll just ask Ms. Chi to come up to the mic and explain the interconnectivity to that because it is an important piece of the puzzle.
So, yes, the BRT was, the EA to look at the connection between the Barhaven and Riverside South was completed in 2013-2014 timeframe, and so there is a rapid transit corridor protected for that. In the interim, the benefit for residents in Barhaven is that with the Stage Two, we have light, the O train being extended to Bozville with a very large park and ride facility there, and residents can access that park and ride through the local service. Right now, it's the 99. And there would be plans to also introduce transit priority measures along Earl Armstrong in order to improve that connection.
And in terms of the future BRT, how far away is that in terms of the affordability and the affordability plan for the city, or can we see perhaps the trains going in before that? Or would you see a period where we would have the BRT built in Riverside South and Barhaven?
Yes, the BRT through the EA was determined to be an interim measure. It is still not in the affordable plan, and for, BRT would probably likely come in first before the rail is extended further into Riverside South because that would come at the time when the entire corridor is electrified.
Okay. Thank you for that. I want to also on the record have some of the questions that came up from the satellite location in the south end that you heard a few times at the open house in terms of, why aren't we electrifying now, or why aren't we double-tracking in some cases, but we are upgrading the passing tracks in some cases. So I'd like to get those on the record too at council now so we have them. If you can explain to us why we're moving forward with this plan as opposed to electrifying now rather than down the road.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The main reason for not choosing to electrify now, one, you know, staff got direction to proceed with extending the current technology with this diesel. In order to assure ourselves as a team, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't, over the long term, impacting the city financially by maintaining that existing technology. So we took a close look at that, and essentially, the capital costs associated with converting how that Trillium line operates now with the expansion or getting into things like double-tracking are cost prohibitive and generate little benefit in terms of the operation of the system and in terms of being able to handle the growth in capacity on the line between now and well past 2031.
And so the ridership numbers and the forecasting that you have tells us that this is, this will be good. The diesel extension to Bozville is good for the next 20, 30 years, correct?
Yes, we have plenty of capacity. Our decision to double, to undo double trains, double train consist on the main line from Bayview to Bozville, is more than ample to meet our capacity demands well past 2048.
And can you speak about the reliability issue, something that always comes up too in terms of what you're going to be doing for the tracks, for the passing tracks in some instances, the reliability of the O train as a result of the work that you'll be doing?
Sure. We've done an inventory of how the system works, signals, controls, so there's some upgrades that we're going to be recommending that the proponents deal with either initially in the construction or further down during the maintenance period as well. Because we're running longer trains, we have to extend some of the passing tracks. Reliability, as I've said many times before, was, is a key component, and that's why we're not looking at the extension to Trillium Line as simply an add-on. We're actually looking at improving the existing conditions in the, on the existing line itself. That includes upgrades to the bridge at Rideau, for example. I mentioned the passing tracks, signals, the tunnel as well, and what you're going to get as an end result is a much more reliable system that operationally has a little bit of slack built in. So should you experience a delay of a minute or two at one station for, you know, an unplanned event or someone slow to get on or off, we'll actually be able to catch up in the system in order to, you know, basically operate those 12-minute headways throughout the system as planned. The other, thanks to the funding that we got from PTIF, from the federal government, we're actually looking, we're designing now grade separation at the Elwood Diamond, which is one of the factors that impacts reliability. The Elwood Diamond is where the Via line currently crosses Trillium Line. It's the only at-grade crossing on the system right now. We're designing a bridge right now, and we're hoping to be able to bring that bridge into the overall scope of the program when we go out to Tender. If we were to do that, it would greatly benefit the reliability, the performance of the line, as well as some of the long-term maintenance. The crossing can be pretty hard on the trains currently.
Do you have any concerns at all about, another comment that comes up regularly is that this Bozville station is sort of in the middle of nowhere. It's set aside in a field, and I know as Riverside South has developed, it's moving further east, and the, in fact, town center is going to be at Lime Bank and Earl Armstrong. So are there any concerns in terms of ridership forecasting that you're going to be going a bit, you know, backtracking, if you will, before you get to the train? I'm talking for the Riverside South resident, but of course, south of me, whether it's in councillor Jerus' area or councillor Moffat's area, those who may decide to park and ride there, well, they won't be backtracked for people in the developed part of Riverside South. Is there any concern in terms of the forecasting and the ridership that may be seen as backtracking?
No, we don't have any concerns about that. We, you know, are looking at this in the long term, but even in the short term, our modeling shows quite a lot of demand for park and ride at Bozville. And, you know, the ridership bump that you're going to see both in 2023 and as the overall line operates and grows throughout the years moving forward, you know, we think it's going to provide an excellent opportunity for people to get on transit much sooner. It will compete in terms of travel times into the downtown core with automobile trips at peak at that time as well. And the reason why we have the ability to expand that lot out to 3,100 spots as the ultimate configuration is because of the demand that we're seeing for that location.
And how much time can the residents expect to be on the train from Bozville to downtown?
So it's, the runtime is about 22 minutes between Bozville to Bayview, and then you transfer, so you could wait two, three minutes for a train, and it's less than 10 minutes into downtown from there.
Can you talk a bit about the cost? Because again, that's one of the themes that comes up. I know the, you know, our federal and provincial counterparts obviously are on board for their share, but in terms of the city, how are we confident in terms of our forecasting affordability that we're able to afford this project?
I think Mary and my, the treasurer, would be best to answer that question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we're confident in the affordability of this project. We typically, when we do our forecasting, we're very conservative with respect to the revenues that will come in, and we are not so conservative with estimating what the cost could be. So based on that, we know this can fit into the overall city financial structure. It will mean the issuance of debt, but it is well within the limits that council has imposed on us for use of debt and the province has imposed on us.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want, any comments now would be the time? Any wrap-up comments? Okay, thank you. Councillor Brockington, please. Questions and comments?
Thank you, Your Worship. Good morning to you and to members of council. This definitely is a historic day in the city's history and certainly one that I'm very proud to be part of. As cities evolve, I've always believed they must have a very strong and sufficient transportation system, not just for today but for the future. We want to build a system that obviously addresses demands of today, but we are forecasting the demands for future decades, and I firmly believe this is a strong plan, and I will be supporting the recommendation before us in its entirety. I am confident and will be supporting this. Doesn't mean I don't have additional questions and will be going through those. The first, just to carry on with councillor Kakish's costing analysis, a lot of questions from constituents about what type of vetting and professional analysis has been undertaken by our staff to ensure that everything that's being proposed is necessary and the costing is solid, that we're not going to have surprises. Can I just have a comment, please, from staff on the costs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's two parts to that. The first is we have an owner's engineers team, which is that group of external specialists that we hired, that you approved, and they bring to the table thousands of years of history of knowledge and expertise, and their task is to make sure that they get this thing right, both from a design perspective and also an estimating perspective. On top of that, Mr. Swale and I did a number of challenge functions to them, both technical and financial. Ms. Similax's team, I can assure you, was along every step of the way, making sure that we stayed within all the parameters of the financial modeling process, which has to be rock-solid to make sure that she can answer the question that she just answered to the previous councillor. And on top of that, we did do internal challenges in terms of both the design and the estimates to make sure that every step of the way, we were aligned to our affordability and the design parameters and all those motions that I referred to in my opening comments. Very robust process with people that have done this before and that have come from the P3 environment. We also have Deloitte as part of the team, and their mandate is to make sure they challenge every single number that the team puts out on the table, and they've done that every step of the way.
Can you talk about the processes that will be used for future phases where there'll be recommendations coming at some point to council to extend the lines again, regardless of which direction, but we've heard today about involving Prince of Wales Bridge. We have a motion on the floor to look at Barhaven. For Phases One and Two, there were processes used to determine where the endpoints would be and why, both financial challenges and just volume challenges. Are the motions today more symbolic and they would be looked at anyway? And what type of process will you be engaged in when you come back to us for Phase Three?
Staff will take all those motions, and we will put that into the transportation master plan process. We will, staff with Ms. Chi as the leader of that group, will do what they do with every transportation master plan, is use the modeling, use the knowledge, the expertise to look at all the transportation corridors and bring forward a staff-recommended plan, factoring in all those motions into the process. So we will certainly make sure that we look at all those motions and factor that into the process. We'll then bring you our professional recommendation, and then you will, as council, do what you always do and give us direction and approve or adjust accordingly.
Thank you. The art, art procurement and the $10 million purchase, certainly I have raised this publicly concern about the amount. We've had some pretty good discussions on this. Again, some of the feedback I've heard from my residents was a desire, particularly for Phase One, to incorporate more local artist work, to have OC Transpone incorporate local art or a local flavor at our stations that would be reflective of the communities that they serve. Can you talk about how art will be procured for the Phase Two and whether or not local artist work will be incorporated as well?
Yes, I'll ask Mr. Shenye. I've chatted with him about this topic, and I'll ask him to explain and respond to your request. I think we can achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the city's public art policy, of course, does try to reflect the local community, and that's always been part of our mandate. And so our public art unit that will work on this project will commit, of course, to working, reaching out with information sessions to local artists to get them interested in this project and get them to participate. We will distribute when the call does go out for artists, for the procurement of this art. We will work with local groups to make sure that they are all aware and they're organized to be able to respond to this. And that goes as well for the Aboriginal First Nation Inuit community, which, again, with their own artists, may well want to participate in this, and we think there will be interest. And lastly, something that we've been wanting to do, which I think may help with some of this, is to organize a materials and methods session for local artists so that smaller artists that perhaps have never integrated their own art into something as large as a transit station would understand the materials and how to adapt their art to incorporate it into it. So we think that with these measures and with the competitive call, we would be able to attract local artists to participate in this process.
That is very good. I applaud that, and I thank you for a greater focus on local artists and incorporating. I think that's very, very good. At Fedco, I raised concerns, particularly with the Trillium Line and some of the associated works with the Trillium Line. I needed more information about the Walkley Maintenance Area, the staff proposal to relocate that. I've had, again, conversations with staff where it's proven to be financially in taxpayers' interest to proceed with the staff recommendation and that the impact on local residents will be low to nil, so I'm very satisfied on that front. No doubt about it, concern with the 16-month shutdown. I used to be a daily O train rider. I used to ride it from the day it opened to travel to Tunnies Pasture and have survived multiple summer shutdowns, and there is an impact there, not just the inconvenience for passengers, but the potential that they would substitute their mode of travel during this, not just during, but after. But when you look at the Dowes Lake Tunnel work that's necessary, the Rideau River Bridge work, we're building two new stations on the existing line at Gladstone and Walkley, that track signal work, a potential bridge over the Elwood Crossing, the Veerail Crossing just south of the Confederation Station. And Mr. Manconi explained they could do it three months at a time, then reopen for 2021. And Mr. Manconi explained they could do it three months at a time, then reopen for six weeks, and then close again. To me, it's just not the way to go. So as inconvenient as 16 months it is, I certainly support getting this work done all at once and opening up brand-new and ready-to-go. So I acknowledge the inconvenience, but support the staff direction. Also with the Airport Link, I do support the spur to the airport. Certainly, I'd like to see ridership numbers higher, and staff have acknowledged there will be a promotion campaign to get people aware and using it and understand that the technical challenges that exist, not going to downtown at this time, but certainly I think there needs to be a future thinking about, do we need to double-track that line at some point in the future? It's not going to happen in phase two, but definitely as the southern communities continue to grow and demand increases, we have to think about that. One question. When the Trillium Line train gets to Bayview, will there be capacity on those trains, which have just originated at Tunnies Pasture, to pick up this large group of people that have just come off a train and now want to go downtown? Or will they require multiple trains in order to facilitate that big group all at once?
So that's a great question, because that point, Bayview, is actually sort of the peak load point on the system and is one of the key reasons why we introduced the station reconfiguration at Lincoln Fields and at Herdman in order to introduce an empty train at that location that could serve the core of the line, run essentially back and forth between Lincoln Fields and Herdman if need be. What that does is it ensures by the time those trains get to Bayview, there's that additional capacity to take those, and we estimate it to be about 1,000 people in the peak hour in 2023, from those trains to get on the first train that comes by, as opposed to waiting and seeing trains that are completely full go down. So this is something that we'll monitor on an operational basis, and if we need to add that additional capacity in the core at peak points, either AM or PM, we will do so, and we're protecting for that operational flexibility to see that it's done.
Very good. So I just want to commend staff on an excellent work for many years now and all the councils, past and present, who have been engaged as well, and I look forward to getting stage two up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brockington. Councilor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff and to say just how pleased I am to be part of this today. It's a big deal in our city. Phase one, we weren't all around here, but certainly the city was ready for phase one of our LRT plan. And phase two is just going to, I think, really change the way we're able to move around the city and change some of the things that we're able to do in the city. I know for myself, I rarely drive anymore to South Keys if I go to, say, Chapters or any of the shops down there that I need to get to. I take the Trillium Line. It's convenient, it's right there, and I look forward to being able to visit Orleans, to be able to visit Bayshore and eventually Kanata by train. It's an exciting, it's an exciting prospect for the city. And with all of this change, we'll be able to really think about how we move people around, how we're able to move people around, because physics alone just tell us that we can't just continue to add car capacity to the city. We'll always need to drive, but being able to put that number of people on light rail will certainly change how we move around. Just have a couple of questions on land acquisitions. It is something that I inherited. I know it was a decision made in the last term of council, and I wasn't here long when I was, when the first report was brought to me, and I had something like two hours. And I'm certainly not placing any blame on staff. This is, I know it had to be done quickly, but I had something like two hours to look at the report, think it over, and concur. And I just wonder, the recommendation in front of us has us continuing without it ever coming back to council, except for when everything is finished. And I think that it's, I know for myself, I've grown uneasy in my role in concurring with these reports, mostly because, not mostly, I always have been, but when we asked that it be contemplated as part of an audit, we were told that it was too complex. So I went away at that point wondering why it's not too complex for me, and I'm certainly no real estate expert, but why it's too complex for our auditor and our audit committee to look at these reports biannually or annually and not be able to come back to council. Could you just provide me with a rationale why that can't happen?
Through the mayor, councilor, to answer your first question with regards to the actual process, essentially what we're proposing to do with stage two of the LRT is to improve the process that we had in stage one. And what I mean by that is with regards to the properties that are going to be expropriated or proposed to be expropriated, essentially that will be identified by staff, so that's step one. Once those properties have been identified, and for the most part, they've already been identified, we would then meet with a particular ward counselor to go over those different properties, to talk about how they could be affected and what we're proposing to do. Once we've done that, if there's no concern with the local ward counselor, we'd then be reaching out to the mayor's office and be doing the exact same process with the mayor's office, and I'm sure the mayor's going to want to make sure that everything's okay with the local ward counselor. Once we get that, sign off from both sides, then we'd be moving forward with a report to council to approve the expropriation for the various properties that are going to be required. So actually, we're adding another layer in terms of moving forward with the whole expropriation last process with regards to having council more involved and more engaged.
And does that include, then, land acquisitions that aren't part of an expropriation process, but a purchase or a land swap?
That would include all properties.
So you will be reporting back to council. How does that differ then than what we were doing for phase one? Because for phase one, you weren't coming back to council. It was only going to happen when everything was finished. So you're telling me that in phase two, that won't be the case, that you'll be coming back to council with a report?
I just want to clarify what I said earlier. What I attempted to say is that for all property matters with any given board, whether it's the ward, whether it's an acquisition, whether we're looking at a fee, simple interest, an easement, a temporary right-of-way, whatever the case may be, in all instances, we will be consulting with the local ward counselor as well as the mayor as we move forward. With regards to the actual reporting out, we're proposing that a similar process be done, as was done in step one, that we not, or stage one, that we not report out until all of the transactions have been done. And the reason that we're asking that we continue with this process is that we were very successful in stage one and moving forward and protecting the city's interests with regards to financial liability, and also in some cases, protecting the owners, because the owners were in the process of relocating, because in some cases, we're actually dealing with buyouts and that sort of thing. So we wanted to protect their interests as well as the city's interest as we move forward. So at all points in time, I can assure you that when we've gone through with the land acquisition, that we've had representatives from BLG, who are our lawyers, they worked with us on all these property negotiations, and we basically have them sign off every report that we have followed, our property acquisition policy as well as expropriation process. And for each one of those reports, before it's finally signed off, we do come back to the local ward counselor. Once the local ward counselor signed off, then we go to the mayor's office for a sign off as well.
Okay, well, I'll give that some more thought. Thank you. My next question is on the business case. I just, I know that we've had several meetings, and I've had many questions answered, and I thank you for that since Fedco. But on the business case, if we're looking at, my understanding is that the 8.2% increase in ridership that we anticipate, that assumes the 417 widening. So the numbers that we have here assume the 417 widening, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So do you know what the percentage, like what the loss is because of the 417 widening? Do you know what the difference would have been?
So I do not. We've had that question asked by another of your colleague as well. So the way the business case is done is it looks at all of the planned projects from now till 2031 on the overall transportation network. And so the increases in ridership also increase the additional capacity on the overall road network, and also the vehicle kilometer reductions that you see there are also in it, look at the global improvements to the overall transportation network as well as the improvements to the transit network. So we haven't segmented out impacts to the 417, and we haven't imagined a scenario, because that was on the planning horizon for the expansion of the 417. In the business case, we don't imagine a scenario where that expansion doesn't take place. We can go back and reverse some engineering, we think, on the numbers. It's just going to take us a little bit of time.
Okay, but so, just so I'm clear, it was never contemplated without the widening, then?
It was never contemplated without the widening of the 417, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Fleury, please.
Merci. Merci, Monsieur. Thank you. Journée pour la ville. I think it's a wonderful day for the city. I think we all play a role for our communities, but also we have to represent the whole city. And I think this comes at the right time. I remember being at the table a few years ago, we were talking about phase one, and we're pretty advanced in the construction of phase one, and transit affects all of us. Our residents want to be able to travel throughout the city quickly, and phase one is not enough for that purpose. So phase two extends the network east to west, and that's important. And it's not all communities that will benefit equally, that's part of reality, obviously. We have to realign the network at one point to improve the transit services in certain communities that did not benefit from the train. So I think it's important to consider that for all of the city, because we have a ridership that will increase. Some areas are not covered, but we can't cover everything. And if we have a good strategy, if we go ahead with good budget allocations and a good alignment of the network, and this is difficult, because some networks are established, and that's very sensitive, because our residents are used to the location of a bus stop or not wanting to have a transfer. So in the next phases, we can change that, and for phase two, I think people are very pleased. And I think we can also have a more in-depth look at communities that can be closer to the stations but that do not benefit directly. So I tip my hat to everyone who's worked on it, whether it's for relationships with Rideau Transit Group, which were complex in those phase-two discussions. And we had elements that were part of phase one, for example, just think of toilets, which is something important for the integration of stations. And also, it's an opportunity to add commercial activities. So I think this will be very successful for the whole network. We can see how we can people closer together, and we can integrate communities. And finally, one thing that is important also is the connection between transit and the airport. I know there is a bus that goes to the airport. I've used it a few times. It's okay, it's a good service, but obviously, in a few years, with phase-two work completed, we'd be able to get to the airport from any neighborhood through, I think, with VRail or the bus. I think it's a major asset. And also, what we'll have to continue to consider is the whole aspect of access financially. We've gone through one step in this phase based on affordability, but we'll have to look at the number of users that we want to have. So it's important to have that thought process. So thank you to all those who worked on light rail. We know that it's a very sure way of getting around. When it says that the train will arrive in one minute, it will arrive in one minute. So that shouldn't be neglected. We'll ensure improved transit for all the residents and OC Transpone managers, counselors, everyone who's participated. It's a great progress, and I think will leave a mark on history. Those who will have experienced the construction but also will benefit from transit. Thank you.
Merci. Conseil, nous sommes, s'il vous plaît.
Councilor Nussbaum?
Simply wanted to echo a lot of the comments already made about how important stage two is to the advancement of transit building in our city. I think it's a great opportunity to really see and realize all sorts of economic, environmental, and social benefits for an increasingly large number of residents in our city, and kudos to staff for all of the work over the years. I'm also seized with the fact that approving stage two comes with great responsibility between the two stages. We are investing, I guess, what, close to $5.6 billion of public funds? So really tried to spend a lot of time with staff before this meeting, understanding everything, particularly in the business case, and I thank staff for that. I have just a couple of more questions as I went through it each time new issues arose. And so my first question, just with regard to the business case, which I found very, very useful, and I think the scope of costs and benefits which were included was impressive and very helpful in understanding what the benefits actually are. Looking at charts three and four, which are on page 39 and 37 of the business case, I was trying to understand a little bit the relationship between the two for 2031, looking at the 636 million vehicle kilometers traveled gained, and then looking at the benefits of ridership, a gain of 10 million rides over the base, which is an 8% increase. Is it too simple, if you do the math, just to say that you divide the number of increased rides by the total vehicle kilometers traveled gained, to say that the average commute would be somewhere in the range of 636? That was the one part that I wasn't sure about in terms of the relationship between the savings on the VKTs and the increased ridership.
So it's a little bit more complicated than that in terms of what are the factors driving some people to transit? Obviously, the overall transportation network is one of those factors, but price of fuel, availability of parking, there are a number of factors, growth in the area, location. We did, we looked, we took a closer look at all the population growth through there, and vice versa. So they are, they do correspond with each other, absolutely, in terms of increased ridership and decreased vehicle kilometers in those two charts. But to make a simple analogy, isn't quite how the model works.
Did you, so in order to come up with the vehicle kilometers traveled, did you have to use an average commute figure?
So what feeds that? And perhaps Vivi can talk a little bit more about the details on origin/destination, but what feeds that is where the people are going to in their main commutes. So that's done, last time I think that was updated was 2011, and then was it updated more recently? No, 2011. So you look at the commute times within each of those origin/destination main locations to the primarily main employment hubs throughout the entire city, and you factor in You factor in that and the commute time and how quickly we can move people on transit versus the automobile trip also is a factor in terms of what drives people either to begin to choose transit as a, as a first choice option for those commutes versus staying in their car.
Okay. So in looking at the benefit cost analysis, which again, I was impressed by in terms of all, all the various factors, in, in trying to apply that same analysis to the bundled projects, I think in answer to Counselor McKenney's question, the answer was we don't know what the additional VKTs would be but for the 417 widening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So I guess the, the challenge there, even though it's not our widening and not our road, is we then don't know what the costs are in terms of the travel time benefits and the air quality benefits and the increased GHG emissions and so on. But is that something that we think we can disaggregate over the coming weeks in order to understand that a little bit better?
I think we can give you some form of an answer along those lines in the, in the coming weeks, yes.
Okay. And then similarly for the 174, I, I know the staff analysis, the original analysis assumed a widening between, I guess, Jeanne d'Arc and the split, and then it was, which showed a 10% decrease in ridership. But then it was revised because right now what's before us in terms of a bundled project is only the addition of the HOV lane from Jeanne d'Arc to Montreal Road. So is there, I know this was in the TMP post-2031 in terms of the affordability plan, but is there any plan for what would happen to that second piece? Do we, do we know if this is approved, what then would happen to that second piece of the widening for the HOV lane?
Counselor, I'm assuming you're referring to fixing the split in terms of that piece?
Yeah.
So that is in, in the TMP. So when that occurs, then that, that HOV lane would continue through, would that be part of the detailed design assessment?
But do we have any sense of when, would that second leg only happen post-2031, or what's the answer?
I believe, I'm looking for, it's post-2031, that's correct.
Okay.
Currently.
And similarly, do we have any sense of, with that bundled project, what the impact on VKTs is for that leg?
So at this point, no. It wouldn't be part of the modeling that we've done to date with respect to the business case.
Okay. And is that something too that can be disentangled?
I will say notionally, yes. It is difficult to do though, and this kind of modeling is, is not meant, it's meant to be more of a global science than a, that detailed science, but we, we can certainly give you an analysis with all of the appropriate caveats at the time.
Okay, great. Yeah, and just to explain why I'm asking, what I'm trying to do again is just apply this, you know, using the cost benefit analysis in the business case, which again, I thought was very good, I'm trying in my own mind to figure out what are the benefits and costs of the bundled projects, and even though the capital costs will not be incurred by the municipality, what are the operational costs in terms of maintenance of the road, in terms of the quantifiable losses, I guess, in terms of the increased VKTs for travel time and for greenhouse gas emissions and air quality contaminants, and then as well some of the private savings too that are realized in the whole plan, you'd have to put on the cost ledger in terms of understanding what these bundled projects would be. So it's, I tried to do it, but in the absence of having some of that data is very, very hard. But I appreciate the effort of staff to try and get that information. What it does mean is it's, it's very, I'm, I'm worried, the concern is, even with the other levels of government paying for this, are we going to end up in a situation where there's going to be a net cost to us? And I guess we don't know that at this stage because we don't know, we can't do some of those calculations in terms of the VKTs. But I do appreciate all the work that staff did on modeling the transit ridership and all of the various answers which were given to my questions over the past couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Nussbaum. Counselor Wilkinson, please. Counselor Wilkinson.
Counselor Wilkinson. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. We're happy to see the extension to Moody, as we've said before, but I noticed that you have to do an extension to Phase Two EA to do that. Is that going to have some public meetings, or how is that going to go about being done?
So yes, we'll have to do an environmental assessment, which will be primarily around converting the technology from bus transit to LRT. The first public consultation for that, I believe, is scheduled for March 22nd. So invites are going out imminently if they haven't already gone out the door. And then I believe there's one later in June. The goal is to have the environmental assessment back before council sometime early September so we can bring it into the in-market period as part of the RFP process.
Yeah, so in the past, some of these environmental assessments are not sent directly to the councils. We have to pick them up on the public notices and things. And the ones in the West End are just as interested in that as the ones that live nearby. So could you make sure that it gets to all of us in the west of the Green Belt because it's, that's a very important one for us?
Absolutely, Counsel. We'll make sure everyone's invited.
And, and same thing's true probably for Barhaven because they're all going to be in, the, send it to all councilors. That's the easiest. The question about washrooms that have been raised, they said they want to put in washrooms without any additional cost, and I'm trying to figure out in my head how that's possible.
So I believe the motion refers to without any additional capital costs, and the reason for that is we had built our capital cost estimates with a washroom at Plaist Orleans in this case because it was potentially the terminus if we could not, and if we cannot get the federal and provincial funding required to extend further to trim. So the capital budget is there and protected in order to implement the public washrooms within the fair paid zone at Plaist, but you're absolutely right, there will be incremental maintenance costs associated with having that public washroom in the station moving forward.
Yeah, and are you going to be looking at that for Moody as well, since that's going to be a terminus with a lot of people changing buses?
If we're successful at getting the extension to Moody within the scope of the Stage Two program, we will have a washroom because it will be the terminus, and we will not have a washroom at Bay Shore due to the reduction of transfers that'll take place at Bay Shore as a result.
I don't think you see one at Baseline either.
I'm sorry, Counsel, there, there is one at, at Baseline.
There is one at Baseline, okay. So, and when you're putting in washrooms, it says always plural. Nowadays, you can put in unilingual, you know, ones that can be used by anybody, you just put a single one in just to have a place that people in great need have them, and that's one of the things we're trying to do because some people have problems and need to have them close by. But if, as you've looked at what the actual numbers, I mean, other than having a male and female, you can have one that can be used by others, as we do even here for our ones that are open for the disabled.
So there are building code standards that apply to terminus stations on electrified rail systems, and we have to build those to the code. I'm not sure if there have been any recent updates to, you know, talk about single stalls, but they will be built to the code standards as they stand now.
Okay. I guess you have to do that. The other question some people have been raising about the cost of the public art for this whole system, when we do the 1%, when you get to a really big...
Counselor, can you speak a little closer to the mic? It's very hard to hear.
When you get, doing public art, the 1% on a large project like this ends up being a very large amount of money. And, and there's been some talk off and on in this chamber with different people, not just that, but are there some kinds of developments that we shouldn't actually do it for? Because I always found it rather strange to put it into a service garage where only the people work there go, et cetera. So is, is anything, taking a look at, at how that will happen? We're getting a number of people now concerned about the value that we're doing, not, not to have no public art, but it is, should there be different percentages on a very large project, for example?
Mr. Mayor, the policy the council approved in the fall of 2015, which refreshed our public art policy, did not reduce the amount, but did introduce the flexibility where certain buildings had less public exposure and where public art was perhaps less of a priority, that there was an ability to move it and put it in a better location, a pooling of funds, if you will, so that we could better use the funds that are collected. There was no provision to reduce the, the 1%, even though we did resist the temptation to increase it, which was what some in the cultural community were asking us to look at. And we said, no, I think by maintaining the 1%, but allowing some flexibility to better position it, that that was the right way to go, and that's the policy council approved.
I'd forgotten that we had refreshed it that time. We don't remember every single motion, Counsel. Okay. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to this happening to the EAs to get it to Kanata and for finding a golden tree that will provide the funds to extend it out to Kanata. I still am not happy the fact that you're sending it all the way through Orleans before you even get to the edge of Kanata. I think that, and because we don't have a bus rapid transit system into our core area either. So in fact, it's the only area that doesn't have some sort of system all the way, and yet it has people going in both directions because we have a very large employment base. And I think they really have to start thinking about what the needs of the community are as well as not just that makes it so people don't have to transfer from a bus to a train in one end of town, when in the other end of town, everybody has to actually not just pack Goa, but get caught up in traffic within their own community as well. So despite that, I will hold my nose and I will vote for the expansions the way it is because that seems to be the way council wants to go, but it does mean that we really do have to look very hard how we can get to the other areas. The West End is growing very quickly now, and with the high tech going as way it is now, it's going to, you're going to see that even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me just start by acknowledging the unbelievable amount of work that has gone into bringing us here today. I know you've all been working very hard on this project, and I, I appreciate that. I also wanted to thank staff for facilitating the web-based consultation last week. I thought it was good. I thought it was sort of branching out for us, it was a new effort, but I thought it was very worthwhile. As a South End Counselor, I heard a lot of discussion about the Trillium Line, as I know you did too, Chris, and even after that, I've been hearing a lot more from residents of the South End. One of the questions Counselor Brockington asked earlier about the systems integration and also just how people move between the two lines, I think is, is important to understand. One of the things that Counselor Brockington and I are concerned with as a result of what we've been hearing in the South End is bathroom facilities at the South Keys Station. I know the terminus station will be further down, but that is a large shopping center area that has a CDP completed on it and that will have a, a large volume of people going through it. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility of looking inside the affordability plan of having washrooms at that South Keys Station?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, you know, we recognize that a lot of transfers will take place at South Keys, and, and yes, there was recently an approved CDP that will, you will see a lot of growth perhaps over the next 10 to 20 years in, in that area. But even with that growth, the amount of transfers that are going to take place between Trillium Line and the Southeast Transit Way are a fraction, I think somewhere around 15% of the, the transfer volumes at the, at the next highest station, which is Bayview, I believe. Yeah. So, you know, we have about, in the peak hour, we're imagining about 270 people transferring versus, you know, for example, the case that has been brought forward with the motion today on Plaist Orleans, where we're up over 2,000 transfers happening at that location.
And how many at South Keys?
About 270 in the peak hour, which is how we measure the trans, the transfers.
Okay, thank you. Just generally speaking, if I can, I've been a strong supporter of LRT in the city. I think Counselor and Harder and I are the early adopters from back around early in the 2000s. And of course, I think we're all very happy to see this project moving forward. It's clearly transformational in the city. It will change the way many of us move around the city well into the future. So I look forward to supporting this report today. I would however like to take a moment to look a little further into the future and just perhaps provide a bit of a cautionary note to members of council that we must always do our due diligence, we must always look at the numbers to guide us, and we can never allow the next phases to turn into a popularity contest. They have to be based on merit and where our residents are traveling, and they have to always make sense from a business case perspective. And to that end, I know we've veered away from our last peer review with the passing of this report today, and I, I think I would just suggest at some point we should perhaps look at a new peer review as we move forward with future phases, if we're fortunate enough to get funding for future phases. As well, in reviewing this report, I saw a number of things that I think are warning signs that I think council needs to pay attention to as we move forward. For example, the business case is no longer as strong as it was in, in Stage One. Many of the indicators have been revised downward. I think there's still a business case, but the strength of it perhaps just isn't as strong, and I think we have to watch those indicators as we move forward. I'm, I'm personally concerned about the recommendation here today to look at expanding the 174. The evidence clearly shows it competes directly with our expanded LRT line, both from a ridership and a fair revenue perspective. I'm also concerned about the affordability model, which embeds in that a 2.5% fare increase every year for the next 30 years. I mean, I think that's at, at least a worry point that we should be looking at. Having said that, it is our job to ensure that we have a strong business case when we are embarking on spending billions of taxpayers' dollars, and value for money is an essential goal in good government, so we just have to bear that in mind as we move forward. So having said that, I will be supporting this report today. I will dissent, as I did at the committee meeting, on three clauses, however. 1D3, the one that explores advancing the 174 for the reasons that I just outlined. 4C4, which is the secrecy surrounding real estate transactions, I think, I believe, I firmly believe council has a due diligence to understand those transactions and know how they're being handled, and that's why we have in-camera sessions, and I don't see any reason why that shouldn't occur. And finally, the, the third one is 4D1, and it's really more symbolic than, I just picked one to indicate that I feel that council is giving too much delegated authority to staff. I think there has to be more continuous reporting back at key points to council than just this much delegated authority, and for that reason, that's why I picked that one. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Conseil Manette, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll start off by just reading some of the excerpts of an email that we all received from Richard Hader, Director of Community Relations for Building and Construction Trains Council. And some of the comments he makes is, "We need your help to alleviate many of the transit issues that Ottawa's 110,000 East End taxpayers often experience while commuting to and from Orleans." Going further down the email, I won't read the whole email, "Highway 174 and the OLRT will help alleviate, or as a minimum, lower the heat on some of the concerns that have been voiced for decades," and that is in fact true for decades. "You are asked to take a leadership initiative to support East End taxpayers, industry colleagues, neighbors on both sides of Ottawa Eastern boundaries. We depend on city council to support our infrastructure job cycle, starting with direct construction jobs and indirect induced jobs that are linked to our industry. As the economy grows, our city's population expands, this $25 million investment will be recaptured for multiple times over." And he finishes, "We wish you and your family, friends, a healthy and safe trip on, on your next Highway 174 adventure." And yes, Mr. Mayor, sometimes it is an adventure. When Mr. Hader mentions 110,000 population in New Orleans, we are roughly around 110, 120,000 population. When we talk about a complete road system, we also have to take into account Prescott Russell, which is close to another 85,000 population that would use that type of road The complete road system is not just addition of lanes. Basically, what we are looking for is we want a continued use of transit combined with regular traffic on the 174, plus adding an HOV lane. We already have most of this work completed. We already have most of this work completed, as we have the bus lanes already in effect. So now $25 million is not building a, a brand-new road, it's just adding to the bus lane that we have. The HOV lanes will not add more traffic. In fact, just like the West End, when you come back from the Canadian Tire place, what do you do, you see with the HOV lanes is people with two or three or four people in vehicles using it. That is the overall goal of what we're proposing. It's not adding three lanes of traffic and saying that, you know, you're solving a solution. You'll never solve a solution if you just add a lane of traffic. But you will solve a solution if you add LRT right up to Trim Road, and that is coming. You will solve a solution when you encourage people to use capacity when they use their vehicles instead of just one individual using the 174. I was surprised that any councillor would have voted against expanding the 174 in the East. I mean, we're, we look at the 417 expansion, I didn't hear much complaints back then, but for some reason, councillors who don't even live in Orleans decide that this is not the appropriate way to go. I would caution members of council that we should all support this expansion, and it's a very wise expansion. It will not take ridership away from LRT. In fact, the report that was leaked, and I'm not sure what councillor leaked it, but I've been, I've, I checked with staff, and the report is not accurate. In fact, and the numbers are quite different than what the report is. When we're looking at doing a complete system, we're looking at discussions that go back to 2006. I am in part of it also. And we're looking today, not only east, west, and south, we have a motion today that's looking north. You know, it's with the leadership of Mayor Watson and Mayor Maxim Padoue-Joubet that is looking further into the future and seeing the complete traffic system. Let's not get bogged down on one lane on the 174, and, you know, if you're going to start dissenting on three, four items, dissent on the whole item is that's the way it should be done. You're looking at transportation that we've, we've done, improvements that we've done in the West. We started off talking about Tonys faster, then we went to Bayshore, now we're up to Moody. Anybody who drives from Orleans to Moody will see that. That's quite an accomplishment, and it's with the leadership and the West End councillors that have made that happen. Together as a council, I think we can improve the system, and we can keep on improving it. And I see my time is up, but thank you very much, Mayor, for your, for the time.
Great, well said, councillor. Thank you very much. Councillor Eggly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I want to take this opportunity to, to thank staff. As, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, I've, I've been in many of the meetings, I've been in many of the public consultations, and I've seen the effort and the hours that John and Chris and their teams have taken to respond to community concerns, to respond to councillors' questions, to, to keep information current, transparent. The effort has been exceptional on, on this project, and this will be a project that is going to impact on the city for many years to come. So, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the mayor and his office, and Sir Charpentin in particular, for the work that they've, they've done on this. And strangely enough, it's Steve Willis's first day here, and we don't really have any issues, but Steve was, was on the other side of the table when we were having discussions about the route during the 100-day discussions, and Steve was, was, was a big part of that. He, he was a, a good, reasonable voice in the room, and I'm very pleased that he's going to be now helping us move this project forward on the city side. So, so it's good that this is your first meeting, it's very timely. As I say, I've been in somewhat of a unique perspective on this project because of the nature of it, and this is a huge opportunity for the city. And I have to agree with, with, with Bob Manette, that we shouldn't get bogged down on the little details. This is a significant opportunity for the city. It's, it's an opportunity to build on phase one while we have the staff that are current with, with the processes and the ideas, and while we, while we have the momentum and the excitement of the residents going forward from phase one. This, this is an opportunity that we have to seize, and I would hope that everyone around this table, and I believe that everyone around this table understands that and will act on that accordingly. I think this is, this is a proposal that we accept wholeheartedly, that we accept as one piece. It, it's a lot like a jigsaw puzzle, and, and like a jigsaw puzzle, a jigsaw puzzle's a lot more satisfying when you have all the pieces. When you spend hours and hours, as our staff and, and council have on this project, to, at the end of the day, have your jigsaw puzzle with one or two or three pieces missing at a thousandths, it's just not right. What's right is to recognize the hard work that's been put in by everybody, recognize what we're hearing from our residents that they want this, they're hungry for it, they're excited about it, and that excitement is only going to build as phase one opens and phase two starts to build. So my suggestion to everybody around the table is that we all put in our pieces, and we finish that puzzle, and it's complete. There are parts of it that you may not like as well as others, and that's the nature of compromise. And on a project this big, with this many moving parts, this many community associations, this many BIAs, this many residents, this many levels of government, there are going to be pieces that aren't quite as good as others. But when you put them all together, you get a really super project, and that's what we have in front of us. We have a project that is going to move this city forward. We're at tipping point from going from a, a small city to a real large city, and this is one of the ways we're going to get there. So I would urge everybody to support this project in its entirety, to get behind it. The more we get behind it, the more the other levels of government are going to get behind it in terms of funding, the more that our residents are going to get behind it in terms of jumping on board the train, so to speak, and the more, the more evidence and ammunition we're going to go to our mayor as he enters into discussions with our counterparts on the Quebec side of the border in terms of extending the project that way, and in terms of discussions we're going to have going forward with the other levels of government in, in moving the project, whether it be towards Kanata or Barhaven or other parts of the city. So I would urge all of you to, to support this, support it in its entirety. Let's send a message to our residents, let's send a message to all the levels of government that this council is 100% supportive of this project, and we want to see the change continue to happen in the city and continue to transform the city into a multimodal, better environment, better efficiency-wise, better transit system overall, better transportation system overall for all of our residents. Let's be, we, we're on the, on the, John Mancone says, "I don't want to be on the bleeding edge, I want to be on the leading edge." We are on the leading edge of transit development, LRT development in this country. Let's stay there, let's work with our team, let's move this forward. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, councillor, and thank you for your work as Chair of Transportation. Councillor Taylor, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. And I do just want to start off by thanking the staff very much for this. I did this at FedCo, and I think it bears repeating. The staff and project partners who have worked on this file have been tremendous allies, not just in getting the project in shape and moving forward, but also surmounting a lot of those challenges and problems that come with when you're not building something in isolation, when you're building it in a ward like mine where you're traversing through established communities with long histories and intimate connections to the spaces around them. And so to, to have the staff approach this in such a delicate fashion, I think, has been the utmost respectful demonstration of how, how important they take this work. I also want to thank, I mentioned the partners, but I also want to thank the residents. The residents of not just my ward, but the West End and the city as a whole have been, I think, more intimately engaged in this project than I have seen in, I think, any project since I've had the honor to sit around this table. Residents have provided opinions, guidance, history, feedback, ancient documents and pictures sometimes produced from basements that have helped to make this project better, have helped to shape how things actually get implemented, and have improved, I think, the overall quality of what we're going to see emerge. And I'm looking forward to continuing with the staff as we work through all the fit-and-finish issues, as we get into the, literally the weeds, I think, in some of the, some of the neighborhoods about how we're going to deliver this on the ground. I, I do want to note, again, the tremendous amount of progress we've made on this file, at least since 2010, since, since many of us at this table today had the opportunity to sit down here. When we sat down here in 2010, I know, looking at, at my ward, getting rail to my ward was a question mark. Nobody knew how you were going to get from Tonys to Lincoln Fields. It just, it was still an unknown. And now we sit here, not too long since 2010, and you're moving all the way, not just to Bay Ward, but through Bay Ward, almost completely to the other side with the extension to Moody, certainly through all of the populated sections of the ward. I did want to take a moment to say that while we're talking about rail today, I do think it bears repeating, and some councillors have mentioned this, I do support the expansion of the road networks that are contemplated as part of this project and ancillary to this project, as I do also support the expansions and investments being made in our cycling network and our pedestrian network. And we saw some of those cycling initiatives today on the report that came before us. Growing our city and better connecting ourselves to each other, to our places of employment, our places of leisure, that's what improves our city, but it has to be in all of the above solution. You can't move forward with simply one approach. We have to pick up all of the tools at our disposal, and I believe that doing it in a combined and comprehensive fashion, as the staff have come at this project, is the way in which we'll be able to deliver on our commitment to residents to build the best city possible, one that responds most ably to their needs. And I want to just finish off by, by mentioning something I think that perhaps we haven't focused on a lot. You know, just today, the Institute of Research in Public Policy released a report called "How Canadian Suburbs Can Become Age-Friendly." And we pride ourselves in Canada, or in Ottawa, on being an age-friendly city. In fact, it was an initiative of this council and the past council. It got us to that position where we have an age-friendly city, and, and of course, councillor Deans chairs our seniors roundtable, and it was all initiated under you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you very much for that. And as the, as the councillor that represents the ward with the oldest demographic in the city, I can tell you, we talk a lot about commuters when we talk about rail, but the IRPP report points out that 66% of Canadians live in car-dependent suburbs, and that driving in a way, as a way of life in most of these suburbs leaves less mobile seniors isolated or unable to stay in their own communities as they age. And one of the things that I found so amazing as we engaged residents along the LRT line was just how much it was going to mean to them as they age to be able to move. So I, I think that's a different perspective, but I want to thank staff as well for planning that into this program. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor. Conseil Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur le Maire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. The first one, I, I know the answer to. Has anyone seen the federal budget of March 22nd yet? How, how are those conversations, offline conversations going? Because we know that all of this is based on a, a missing finance piece.
I might be able to answer that for you, councillor. We've had very positive discussions at both the political and public service levels with, with respect to phase two of LRT. As you know, we had, when we launched phase two of LRT in this very same room, I believe we had four or five federal members of parliament here, and I have every indication that we will be hearing positive news from the federal government prior to the end of May, which is the deadline we've set ourselves in order not to miss a construction season and get the RFP out on the street at that time. So it's been very positive, and I can certainly relay that when I met with the premier and various ministers at Queens Park with our delegation, we updated the provincial government, and they offered any assistance in terms of the bundling and challenges with working with two different sets of criteria. So I'm, I'm feeling very, very good, and we hope to be able to announce something from the federal government in, in the not-too-distant future.
Good. And, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your, your work on this file and on that very important part of it, in terms of our long-range financial plan. A question, maybe to Mr. Swale or Mr. Mancone. The city is bidding on the Canada Games. They are expected in August 2021. The, I, I thank councillors Kakish and Brockington for bringing up so many of the questions that, that concern our South End. They, thank you, thank you very much for their, their insightful questions. In terms of economic development and, and delivering those games, should we win, the announcement will be on March 30th, do you, are you able to build into whatever contract and incentive to have that South End Trillium Line open by August 2021? Is that in your, in, on, on your radar?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question, and it came up last week when we had the, the bid committee on the tour. I was on the bus with them, and that was one of the questions they put to me. The current plan is that we will have bus service, enhanced bus service along that entire corridor, and Mr. Scrimger and his team have been tasked with making it the, the best it can be, and it will be phenomenal as the service, and that's the mandate I've given him. And the, Mr. Swale's team has been instructed to make sure we have the capacity and latitude to build whatever we need to in terms of making sure that bus service is there. What we told the bid committee is that we have all of that factored in, we'll make sure that we can get those athletes and the people visiting the sites to the venues that they need to get to. We will also include everything and anything we can in the bid documents to entice bidders to be innovative in that space, but it will be a challenge. But the fallback position is that the bus service must exceed expectations, and as I told the bid committee, success is that they don't need to worry about the transportation, logistics, we'll take care of all that for both the athletes and for the, the visitors to the venues.
Thank you for that, Mr. General Manager. I would, I would urge you to, to keep that top of mind. We want the, the athletes' experience from across the country to be, to the capital to be as positive as possible. Should we win the bid, I have a high degree of confidence, and, and I think our smashing new LRT line would be, would be a great way to, to feature some of that. Monsieur Mancone, ou Monsieur Swale, est-vous capable d'en parler?
Mr. Mancone, Monsieur Swale, can you talk about the use of 174 and 417 during the building of phase two?
The 417 to move buses, is that the plan during construction of phase two? Choose the 174 and the 417. And how does the expansion of those roads fit into those plans?
Oui, Monsieur Mayor. Dans le deuxième... In phase two of light rail, what we want to do is to make sure that the line goes through the 174 west. Things are a bit more complicated around the Parkway, Scott Street, that sort of thing, and Preston Street. But here again, Mr. Scrimger and his team are planning to use roads that apply the same principles that we used for phase one, limit inconvenience for people who use transit, and also pay attention to all the space that we need for detours. And the other thing is, the report that is in front of you today, we will be adding buses for the detours because we want for the, to make sure that the fleet is new, and the most important thing is to take care of passengers.
Phase one, that's the top priority. On the east, things are much simpler because the alignment, and on the west, there are some challenges that we're factoring through, and then part of the package today here is also the new buses that we speak about in the report.
But the intention is to run buses on the 417 and the 174, is that correct?
In, in the east, it will be the case, and... In the East, it will be the case, and the 417 will be deadheading, and then Mr. Scrimger's looking through all the options for the West right now. And we will also be enticing the bidders to give us their thoughts.
And the widening of those roads is, how would you qualify it? Necessary, important, integral to delivering that plan like it was in Phase One?
No, there are different issues. The 417 was always contemplated in the West for the expansion of that critical road. And as you've heard many councillors talk about, it's important in terms of multimodal movement throughout the city. With respect to 174, this is an opportunity to leverage the fact that we're there, and the impact on ridership in that three-and-a-half-kilometer stretch is very, very minor, and it ranges somewhere between 0 and 0.3%. And as I said at the Fed委 committee, I tasked staff to review the numbers because I didn't understand all of the assumptions that went into that. So the numbers have been revised, and within that corridor, it's somewhere between 0 and 0.3% on ridership and revenue.
If I could just add to the 417 question, sorry, councillor, because you asked what's factored into the bundling of the 417 with our work, and primarily, that's around the structures. That project requires the replacement of several of the overpasses along the 417 corridor. A number of those are directly adjacent, right beside on the north, where we run the BRT corridor currently, which is being converted for LRT between Pinecrest and in Bayshore. So from a construction coordination perspective, it is imperative. You can design where the cars go under or where the train goes under an overpass, but on top, there's a roadway. And we want to ensure a good, solid design of that roadway design. We've spoken about this before, that will ensure better pedestrian connectivity across the corridor, as well as cycling facilities and those things. And because of the close proximity of those two projects, it's much better, it's much more cost-efficient, it reduces a lot of schedule and general risk along the project as well to have them coordinated and delivered by a single company. And also, for that section, when we do do the conversion from BRT to LRT, having those lanes available with a bit of additional capacity for the outside fourth lane to go through will help in terms of delivering the service reliability piece that Mr. Manconi was speaking to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swale. And just, I think councillor Brockington had mentioned how much we in the South End appreciated the meeting we had last, that you hosted at City Hall and that we were a satellite of. Outstanding answers. Mr. Manconi, I think this one's for you. Can you comment? The councillor Dean's mentioned the peer review. I don't know what that is. Can you tell me what a peer review is, and have we had one? Is it necessary?
I believe the councillor was referring to the previous peer reviews that were done for the overall plan, and also, I know, previous OC Transport administrations did a peer review. What a peer review is, if I could use the American Public Transportation Association is, a peer review is where you get a panel of other agencies, usually at the CEO or the general manager level, to come in, and they will assess any part of your operation. With respect to this plan, my professional advice to you would be that you do not need a peer review plan, for a bunch of reasons. The first and foremost is you approved an owner's engineer, and that's an independent engineer. I think the budget for that is about $80 million. That's some of the dates that I talked about. Those are external people that are hired to come in and bring that expertise. Also, you had IO, Infrastructure Ontario, a part of the process, both in Stage One and certainly in a lot of the elements of Stage Two. You also have strict oversight from people like the city manager and the treasurer, who I can tell you ask very pointed questions about affordability, about challenges, about assessments. The other piece is the lens that I brought to it. I was given this portfolio from Mr. Cantalacis in July when he did the realignment, and I can assure you that I did a lot of assessments and brought in people to give me their review of where are we, where's the plan going. And that's not criticism to Mr. Swale or the team. That's just something that I intuitively do when I inherit new portfolios. And had there been alarm bells or concerns or misalignments on affordability or on governance or any of the mandates that were given in all those council directions, I can assure you, one of the first things I would have done was raise that with the city manager, and that's not the case. The other thing that I'm going to remind everyone is, you've won a P3 award in Stage One. I went to the P3 conference in Toronto last year, and I can tell you, Mr. Swale, the owner's engineers team, the staff that work on this, if they were paid a nickel for every question they were asked on how to do things, they'd be multimillionaires because we are leading the pack in Canada and in North America on P3s for light rail. We have had, at last count, I believe we're up to six other jurisdictions come here to ask us how to do things, and what's interesting is, they're already running light rail. Edmonton, Calgary, Vancouver, Toronto. We've even had discussions with Metrolinks. Jerusalem was in. People up from Boston. People come here to learn and see how we're doing things. And even on Stage Two, they've asked us where we're going, and I can tell you, people are reading this report, and they're already lining up to come and talk to the team as to how to do things. I see nothing from my professional lens that would suggest that you need a peer review. We also have an independent lawyer that has been watching this from every angle, and he's been on very large-scale projects in Canada, and he has no concerns. Our chief procurement officer has vetted the whole process, no concerns there. And then when we get into the procurement phase, we'll have an independent procurement officer overseeing the entire thing also. So I don't see the need for a peer review.
Thank you. I have no other questions, so I guess we're commenting now. And I have to thank you for you and your team, the entire team, for all the work you've done on this project. I've asked a lot of questions. I got answers, not always the answers I want, but absolutely got answers on this project. That is far from perfect. We are bound by this council's past decisions, money, technology, but there are so many benefits to go ahead with this. Renewed construction at the Belfast Yards is something that will cause disruption to our community. I'm looking forward to reduced congestion in Alta Vista as a result of the Trillium Line coming online. So like councillor Monnet said, I urge my colleagues to have the courage to support the entire report. It all fits together from an operational, a financial, an engineering point of view. Councillor Egli, I think, used the analogy of a jigsaw puzzle. I would use the analogy of a casserole that has specific ingredients in certain amounts and produces a whole product. It's not a buffet. I suspect that some councillors who want to vote no on certain aspects of this report would be very upset if it wouldn't go through because the result would not produce what our residents expect. If they vote no, they expect the rest of council to vote yes, to do the right thing. The people that would be happy if we didn't approve this report today would be the people in Hamilton and in Thunder Bay and in Toronto because they would suddenly find themselves with an extra billion dollars for their transit project. So like the mayor said, I think, earlier, it's a proud day, it's a bold day, it's a transformative day, where we look forward to the future, and it's a time to be bold and to move forward. And again, thank you for your work on this project.
Merci, conseil. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And like many others today, I'd like to start by thanking our dedicated staff for literally years of hard work put into this project. Chris, you and your team in particular, Mr. Manconi, obviously, very recently taking responsibility for the project. I know it's been thousands, maybe even tens of thousands of hours collectively trying to figure out how to make this work for all residents of Ottawa. And I'd like to bring people back to 2010, when most of us, I think, started. December 1st, 2010. It was a dark and stormy night, actually, Mr. Mayor, if you remember. And when we arrived at the Shankman Arts Centre that night for our swearing-in ceremony, I recall how many of our colleagues commented to me and to councillor Monnet how tough it was to get to the Shankman Arts Centre at 6 o'clock or 6:30 at night in rush hour traffic heading back to Orleans. And for perspective, for people who aren't as familiar with Orleans as others, Shankman Arts is only about halfway through Orleans. It's quite a stretch still to get to Trim Road. And I think that helps highlight the need for the improvements on Highway 174. A study by ACOM, which everyone understands is a large firm that does work in this area, says that the travel time between Trim Road and the split on Highway 174, if people were flowing at the posted speed limit, should only take nine minutes. During rush hour, it takes 23 minutes, and that's to get to the split, which is basically the Saileron Station. To get into the downtown, you're into the 45 minutes to an hour. LRT from Trim to downtown will be 25 or 30 minutes. That's exceptional service for the residents of Orleans and for the entirety of the East As Mr. Manconi has said, a relatively modest, cost-effective expansion of a short piece of 174 to add as a carpool lane will not dramatically change the overall ridership of our system here in Ottawa. And when we look at Orleans ridership, a memo from John Mosher in 2012 told us that the transit modal split from Orleans to downtown is 64%. He further said that it's likely that the 64% transit modal split from Orleans to downtown is the highest suburban-to-downtown transit modal split in North America for a city of our size. If you're taking the 174 to work, you're going downtown. That's the corridor you take to go downtown. So we have 64% modal split on transit, which uses the highway corridor today with bus lanes, and the highway is already slower by a factor of three times than it should be. It's not like we're not expecting population growth in Orleans. Almost half of the urban expansion from the last OP is in my ward alone, and that doesn't include the growth in councillor Monnet's ward or councillor Midx. If all things were being equal and there was no growth happening in Orleans forever, then perhaps we could get away with not addressing the 174, but that's not what's happening. Even with today's population, the demand is there for both transit and for highway capacity, and that demand will only grow greater as we move forward in time and as our population grows. I did a little research preparing for the meeting today, Mr. Mayor, on how many motions, how many reports have come to this council since 2010, talking about environmental assessments, recommendations for 174 and LRT, and bundling them together. There are at least six or seven that have come to this place already. All of them have passed unanimously. If there was a desire not to do this project together, why has it been voted on unanimously the entire time? Now, at the 11th hour, people want to cherry-pick and pull it out. And I'm also called to remember that the same people who are interested in cherry-picking out the 174 are those who most passionately speak about the need to widen the airport parkway, at the same time as extending the O train further south and extending it to the airport. I support all those things. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. We need a multimodal transportation system that provides options for everyone. Not everyone can walk to work, not everyone can bike to work, not everyone can take transit to work. People need their cars or their trucks for their jobs, they work hot hours. Everyone has their reasons. We need a complete system for all residents of Ottawa, and I'm very proud that the Stage Two plan does that, east, west, and south together. And finally, if we go back again to 2010, we recall that the Stage One plan at that time wasn't looking very good either. It was going to be a lot more expensive than we were told during that election, and hard work from Mayor, yourself, and others brought that under control, changed the alignment through the downtown. And even despite that, it was looking more likely we would land someone on Mars before we extended it out to Orleans or out to Moody Drive. And I think we should all be very proud that we're connecting the entire city with light rail transit with this report, and I would urge everyone to vote for it in its entirety. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor. Good historical perspective there. Councillor Leaper.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I'm excited, the residents of Kitchicipi are excited today. As Stage Two moves forward, we're going to convert a couple of stations to rail, and we're going to build a couple of new rail stations. And each of those stations is poised to improve not just the transit access to our ward, but each of them is driving cycling and pedestrian connections around the ward as well. So I am very excited today. I want to thank staff. While we're approving a high-level plan today, the work of consultation has already been well underway on Stage Two pretty much since the beginning of this term. I've had frequent and regular meetings with the affected stakeholders and the senior LRT team. While I hear that we are delegating a lot of work through approval of this plan to staff, I know that the dialogue between my office, the Stage Two team, residents, and businesses has been consistently productive on issues like construction impacts, detours, land acquisitions, route alignments, and the proposed station-oriented development at Cleary. I want to ask today staff to make sure that they continue in this spirit of collaboration with residents. Concomitant with the benefits of LRT, we also have the impacts of the construction of LRT. It's critical to me and to residents that we continue to take every measure necessary to mitigate those impacts and to make sure that we keep the lines of communication open between the senior LRT team and residents. It's been a very good discussion moving forward, and if LRT is going to be a success, we'll need to make sure that those lines of communication stay open for the next several years as well. So thank you to the senior LRT team. Thank you to the council who are voting to approve a project that is really going to improve transit in Kitchicipi Ward, and I'm looking forward to seeing shovels in the ground. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Well said. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. First, I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Swale. Dealing with the key indicators on the project that have been downgraded since we first looked at this, what is the population increase projected between now and 2031 for Ottawa?
I'd have to look that up and get back to you on the total population for the city.
Okay, because we've reduced the projected increase in ridership to 8% as a result of doing this. So I'm wondering, how much of that would have happened anyway, even if we did nothing, just because the population increases?
So the increase that the business case speaks to, the 8%, is an increase where the project is implemented, as opposed to a scenario where Stage Two wasn't implemented? So that 8% increase is over and above as a product of Stage Two itself?
Okay. So now, what sort of flexibility do we have if these indicators continue to drop over the next 15 years?
So I guess a couple of things that I should just clarify. The business case that accompanied the Stage Two report for the functional design back in 2015 was updated based on actual ridership numbers. We had, in that business case, been projecting ridership forward from 2011, and we hadn't taken the time to realign what our current ridership was. And so the changes you see between the two reports are simply a reflection of resetting the baseline for ridership and updating it. And then we wanted to provide, as the treasurer spoke to before, you know, stretch out the growth that we could anticipate in order to create a little bit more resiliency in the overall affordability model. So the other difference is we stretched out that growth to be a little bit less of a sharp increase than had previously been calibrated in order to inoculate ourselves and provide, you know, more resiliency or flexibility in the overall system to assure ourselves that it was affordable.
Then on to the question of land acquisition. How much of the land acquisition are we actually seeking from private sector or private owners versus? versus public land?
I believe there are 59 private property owners that are implicated in Stage Two, either with respect to temporary access for staging and construction or easements as well as full takings, as is in the case that's come up before, 747 Richmond Road.
So far fewer than Stage One.
In Stage One, we had a total of 79. And in this project, we have, as Chris just mentioned, a little over 50, plus seven government agencies.
Okay. Well, then just two or a couple of comments. First of all, I'm a little nervous about the long-term, or medium-term, actually, possible fluctuations in the key indicators. But at the same time, I think in the long run, we're probably on the road to achieving a better outcome from a transit perspective for people. We're still always going to have 70 percent of people driving cars, even if we hit our goals in this plan. But on the purchase of property, I still don't see a defensible reason for not having transparency on the purchases. It's fine to say that on Phase One, it's worked well so far. Well, it's worked— we don't know if it's worked well so far because we haven't disclosed the results, but knowing the way the expropriation process works, we're not in a free-market system when we purchase that property, and we aren't subject to the same sort of things we would be subject to if we were just looking at appraisals. I hope this is all a question of putting together a puzzle and having all the pieces in the puzzle. I hope it's like a puzzle, and I hope it doesn't turn into something like a game of Clue where we're looking for what went wrong after it's too late to do anything about it. So I will dissent on the section—I guess it's 4C4—but obviously I support the improvements to the project that we've managed to put in place over the last several months. And I think we've made the right decision about moving the MSF to Moody. I think that's going to be the cheapest decision in the long run. So I would caution people that with such a small increase in ridership as a result of this, under today's projections, that, you know, we may hope that it goes up, but we don't have anything to prove that it won't. And without a peer review done independently, we don't have a second set of eyes looking at that either. But based on the information we have, I think this is going to be a great improvement to transit in Ottawa, and I think it's going to be something that will change the way people live and change, actually, how some of the communities are constituted in the city and probably in a good way. So with the caveat that I'll dissent on the lack of transparency on 4C4, I'll support it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this today because I believe this is truly historic for all citizens of Ottawa, the vote that we're about to undertake for the service that we're planning for the future for this city. I'm thinking back, kind of taking a stroll down memory lane today, and I'm remembering in 2010, when I first ran to be part of this council, that I was telling people when the question would come up about LRT at the doors, I would say, "Under that plan that we were looking at in 2010, the likelihood of someone starting their career in 2010, they would probably be retired by the time the train would come to Kanata." Well, now, a little more than a year and a half ago, we started the process of looking at getting that train closer out to Kanata. We started the EA process with the help of our RMP from Kanata, Karen McCrimmon, helping us get the money to get that EA done and started, I should say. Kanata, it's now realistic that the trains will be there maybe before I retire. I'm excited that it's at Moody as part of this Plan Two because Moody is really the front door into Kanata. It makes it possible that people in councillor Wilkinson's ward and my ward and councillor Cadre's ward will be able to get on a bus near their street, and that bus will be able to take them to Moody, where they will get on a train in 2023 and be able to get to their jobs downtown. And that is a huge move forward from the original date of 2031, just to start the planning process. So I think it's historic. I think it's our step towards a citywide transit service. With the changes to the O train and so on, where the south of Ottawa is being brought into the plan with councillor Harder's motion today, makes it even closer to even more homeowners out to, you know, our biggest ward in the city. So I hope council will support this motion today. I'm nervous a little when I hear people wanting to do like they want it to do with Lansdowne and with the other LRT plan. Instead of hitting the reset button, now they're talking about hitting the pause button. I hope my colleagues don't support any kind of move like that. We have a really good plan, thanks to your leadership, Mr. Mayor, and the hard work of our city staff to come up with this plan. I think it's an affordable plan for our city for going forward. It'll be—the users of the system will be paying the bills for the system that we are laying out today, and I think it's going to help take our city into the future. And so on that note, I just hope everybody can vote for this, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today to vote for it.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor Hubley. Anyone else wish to speak or ask questions on the report? I'll offer a couple of comments. I've enjoyed the historical perspective members have brought to the table, certain members have brought to the table, because if you do recall back six years ago, there was really no plan to bring world-class transit to Ottawa. There was no realistic plan. It was not affordable. And certainly, when we had discussions with the federal and provincial governments, quite frankly, they didn't take us all that seriously because we did not have our act together. Today, we're voting on a plan that will bring modern, efficient, environmentally-friendly LRT to all parts of the city, and we're building farther, faster than anyone believed possible six years ago. When we engage with our partners, we engage with a strong, credible plan. And I want to thank our staff, and certainly members of council have expressed our appreciation to the staff, what they've done over the last four years to pull this plan together, a plan that is fraught with challenges and complexity. When we procure Stage Two of LRT, I hope members of council will take pride in the magnitude of this accomplishment. Sometimes it's easy to miss the forest for the trees, but I invite members of council to take a step back. Really, our role as legislators is to not row the boat, but it's to steer the boat, to be in the crow's nest, looking out 30,000 feet, and to give direction to staff, which we did, and ask staff, with the professional advice from consultants and experts around the world, today we're procuring a rail system that will bring LRT to within five kilometers of 70 percent of our residents. Just as we refer.
I'm so proud to be working with our employees and city council. I think that the progress over the next few years will transform our city. Phase Two of the light rail will allow us to continue the transformation, economic transformation of our city.
And I'd encourage members to listen to the members from the East End, who know their community so well, who understand some of the transportation and transit challenges that that part of the community has faced, and quite frankly, that has stunted some of the economic growth because there has not been the easy access as residents in the West End have with 417. A few months ago, we signed off on a package of $317 million in transit and active transportation improvements. The improvements to the 174 represent less than 10 percent of that active transportation investment, and it was carried with the strong support of all members of council. Now, today, we have some members of council who want to widen the airport parkway and want LRT to the South End, but don't want to turn one lane into an HOV lane, which is good for the environment, and have LRT go out to the East End. It doesn't make any sense, so it's all about balance. And I believe that this package, and I call it a package, is incredibly balanced and is well-supported by the residents of the East, West, South, and Downtown. I really believe that our city is on the cusp of great things, but that greatness comes with courage, the courage of our convictions as we move from Ottawa the Old to Ottawa the Bold. I'd encourage all members of council to have the courage of their convictions and support this plan in its entirety. And I want to also particularly thank members of council who have worked hard on the particular amendments that we have before us. For instance, on the issue of Gatineau, a day doesn't go by when someone doesn't come up to me and say, "What are we going to do to improve the north-south connectivity between the province of Quebec and the city of Gatineau and the province of Ontario and the city of Ottawa?" I want to thank councillors Egli and Leaper. They have a motion that is before us. And really, thank former Mayor Shirelli, who saw the wisdom and had the foresight to purchase the Prince of Wales Bridge, and members of council were on that council at the time.
Today, we're asking city council to continue the dialogue with the city of Gatineau to improve the transit for residents.
Provide a mandate to enter into formal discussions with the city of Gatineau about how to better connect our two cities. And think about it, you all have constituents who live in Ottawa and work in Gatineau, and Mayor Maxime Penaud-Joubin has exactly the opposite, live in Gatineau, work in Ottawa. This is a great opportunity for a win-win for both cities. If we can improve the transit experience for the residents traveling between our two cities, we can strengthen the economies, improve the environment by reducing the number of buses traveling on our bridges and in both directions, and we can strengthen our respective tourism sectors.
We will improve the tourism industry and the economic development, and now we want to consolidate our liaison in transit.
And transit infrastructure and active mobility that will move people more efficiently for generations to come. I want to take this opportunity to thank David McGinty, Chair of the National Capital Region Liberal Caucus, for his leadership and that of his federal colleagues on this issue. I also will work on this issue with the chairs of Transit, councillor Blay, and Transportation, councillor Egli, as these discussions with Gatineau progress, if the motion passes later today. Should this exploratory dialogue lead to any specific proposals, I'll be reporting back on that through the appropriate standing committee in due course. We have spoken frequently about the need to strengthen transit connectivity between our two great cities. There's no better time to signal our intent to act jointly with the city of Gatineau, working to improve, over the long term, our interprovincial transit system for all our residents. And as the city continues to make progress on a number of city-building opportunities, including the Le Breton proposal, Zibi, the main library, Stage Two LRT to Moody, to Trim, to Algonquin College, and to Beaux-Ville and Riverside South, we have to continue, and the airport, rather, we have to continue to see our two cities as an economic unit that competes for jobs and talent around the world. In practical terms, we need to have a frank dialogue with the city of Gatineau about how we could use the Prince of Wales Bridge to improve rapid transit and active mobility between our two cities. And as you know, or some of you may know, the Rapid Bus system is up and running in Gatineau. The station at Tache Boulevard would be the ideal connection with our O train to bring passengers from Gatineau to Ottawa and Ottawa to Gatineau back into their Rapid Bus system. And I want to be perfectly clear that this is not about Stage One or Stage Two of Ottawa's transit plan. This is about laying out a clear vision for Stage One of an Ottawa-Gatineau transit plan for the long term that doesn't necessarily respect and spend too much time worrying about jurisdictions and boundaries. The reality is, if you live in Ottawa and you work at Place de Portage or Place de Les Chaudiers, you've got to get over the bridge. And none of us, I think, around this table, or very few of us, want to get into another bridge debate, the Divisive Bridge Debate that we saw that pitted one region against the other, and councillor Tierney's area, and councillor, certainly, Neusebaum with Kennel Island. So I'm asking the members of council, when this motion comes forward, to support it as well. I'll complete my comments with respect to the West End, as I've talked about the South and the East, and to commend the West End members of council for the work that they have done, councillors Cadre and Elial Shantiri, Wilkinson and Hubley, who worked with my office and Karen McCrimmon to secure the $2 million for the first step of the environmental assessment to bring LRT to the West End, to Kanata. And thanks to the work of our staff, and Chris Swale and John Manconi and Vivi Chi and Marion Similak, we are able to include in this package the very good news to move the LRT farther west, past Bayshire and Algonquin College, to Moody Drive. And those of you who know that particular part of the city, and I know it well, it was part of my provincial riding as EPP out there, know that we have a real challenge with 9,000 to 10,000 DND employees coming to Moody Drive with very few transit options. And we know the number of DND employees, RCMP employees, that live in the East End, a disproportionate number, and without some kind of an option such as rapid transit to that area, it would be very difficult, time-consuming, and clog our east-west connector lanes to get those employees from the East End to the West End. So this is very much a down payment on our ultimate goal to bring us to LRT. And just as I will be supporting councillor Harder's excellent motion, that really is the natural progression from the Southwest Transit Way and bringing people along Woodruff, and of course, at that pinch point at Hunt Club, we're weaving the buses into Woodruff Avenue traffic and then weaving them back into LRT at baseline in the Algonquin Station. And we really do need to solve that problem because, quite frankly, that is the missing link between the Barhaven residents on a good BRT system going right into the train at Algonquin College, and we already have built the underground tunnel for the LRT system at Algonquin. So it's a perfect scenario that's coming up, and I'd urge you to also support that motion, as well as councillor Cadre's motion with respect to us at least examining the option of the Moody Drive Park and Ride. We've seen the success of the Park and Rides in other parts of the city, and I think those just make good sense.
So it's time for me to thank you, thank all the staff working on this file, and thank you for the leadership of council members, people who worked on this project for the past three or four years.
Support the entire package. So we're going to go to the motions now. The first one is councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Egli, with respect to LRT connection to Barhaven. Carried. Second, councillor Cadre, seconded by councillor Hubley, Moody Station Park and Ride. Carried. Third, councillor Egli, seconded by councillor Leaper, Collaboration Ottawa-Gatineau. Carried. Fourth is councillor Blay, seconded by councillor Kakish, with respect to public washrooms at Place d'Orleans. Carried. So on the motion, I'm going to ask for yays and nays on the item for Stage Two LRT implementation, project definition, and procurement plan as amended.
May I have a board?
Councillor Deans?
How come we record our dissents on the segments we want to dissent on?
You want to do that now?
Okay, so I would just like to dissent on 1D3, 4C4, and 4D1.
So yays and nays, please? Sorry, I don't see any buttons being pushed. So councillor Shirelli?
Dissent on 4C4.
Okay. Councillor McKenney?
Dissent on 1D3 and 4C4.
Councillor Neusebaum?
Okay. Dissent on paragraph 1D3.
Councillor Leaper?
And a dissent on 1D3, please, Chair.
So yays and nays on the report as amended, please.
Councillor Wilkinson. Consigliere Blay.
Oui.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Chair. Councillor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Councillor Midic?
Yes.
Councillor DeRuz?
Oui.
Councillor Egli?
That's to the whole package.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Consulier Monnet?
Yes.
Councillor Moffatt?
Yes.
Consulier Ferri?
Oui.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Elshantiri?
Yes.
Councillor Kakish?
Yes.
Consulier Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor Neusbaum?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
24 yays.
Great, thank you very much. Next is item 5, Long Range Financial Plan Transit Plan financière longtemps de transport en commun. Councillor Neusbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask a question earlier, because it's related to the other item, but I might as well just ask it now. On page 267 of the report is a forecasted ridership growth, which shows the estimates in this report, and then shows a dotted line from the 2014 estimates. And my question was very straightforward. I understand that our base is lower than we expected in 2014, that part I understand. But I'm just wondering, in terms of the projected increases in ridership, I guess back in 2011, we were thinking in 2019 we'd see about a 5% increase off whatever the base is. In 2014, it looked like it was a little bit lower, and now we're projecting a 2% increase in 2019. And I'm just wondering, what were the, I don't know who I'm speaking to, actually. Marion, okay. So just wondering, again, I understand that our base is lower than we had hoped, but what would be the reasons why our expected growth in 2019 are lower now than we had hoped for, either in 2014 or 2011?
Thank you for the question. Quite simply, as I indicated before, we took a very conservative approach with respect to revenues, so when it came to ridership, we basically tried to mirror what we've been seeing in the last couple of years, we extended it a little bit further out, we took a more conservative approach than we have in the past.
So is that to say that the 2011 projections, they were sort of less conservative, but were cautiously hopeful that we'll achieve what we had hoped to do in 2011?
I would say they were less conservative, and then we had the experience of those years to inform us as well about changes in sort of the demographics and where employment was, so we factored all of that in, and we actually had an expert on sort of ridership forecasting came in and reviewed it, and he agreed with the approach we had taken to forecasting.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. On the report received. Next is a disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authorities. Received. 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 Received.
That the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending March 3, 2017, Environment and Climate Protection Committee Report 13, Finance and Economic Development Committee Reports 21 and 22, Climate Committee Report 40, and Transportation Committee Report 21 be received and adopted as amended.
Adoptee, carried, thank you. Motions of which those have been previously given, motions dont avaient été données entièrement, councillor Deans and Wilkinson's motion, we talked to that on the motion, carried. Councillor Monnet, seconded by myself with respect to the Orleans Craft Beer Festival, councillor Monnet, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty straightforward motion, it's just saying that closure of Centrum from June 9 to 11:00 PM, and on Sunday, June 11, for the Orleans Craft Beer Festival, also wording that is required for special occasion permit to be submitted.
Great, on the motion, adoptee, carried. Motions requiring suspension of the rules and procedures, two motions from councillor Chernoshenko to declare events at municipal significance to obtain a special events permit, Sugar Lumber Fest and Ottawa Welcomes the World, councillor. On suspension of the rules, carried, councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Thank you very much, and I think, as with councillor Monnet, although people are welcome to drive if they need to, we encourage them, if they are doing the driving, to stay within the alcohol limit. Passengers, on the other hand, are welcome to take full advantage of what's available to them. We have two of these motions, both very similar, they involve special occasion permits under the Liquor Licensing Act. The first is, we have to declare these events of municipal significance. One is the Sugar Lumber Fest for the purpose of a special occasion permit submitted by the event organizer pursuant to Ontario Regulation 38991 as amended. We are looking to declare that a event of municipal significance, I guess we'll do one at a time on that item.
Carried, thank you.
And the other one is to declare the series of events, the Ottawa Welcomes the World events, events of municipal significance for the purpose of special occasions permit. This is a series of events going on at Lansdowne over the course of this year.
So this is the, when the embassies are hosting national days at the Horticulture or the Aberdeen Pavilion. So on the motion, carried, thank you. The next motion is from councillor Kakish, seconded by councillor Chernoshenko, on suspension of the rules with respect to Prince of Wales. On suspension, carried. Councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in regards to intersection modifications project for Prince of Wales, and staff have come back and advised us that a certain stretch of the work requires rehab instead of repaving, and therefore we need some additional money, so this motion is moving that, and we're doing it today because of the timeline sensitivity with the tendering, which we need to go to as soon as possible, so therefore we need that city council approve the capital authority for the 2017 resurfacing program to complete the Prince of Wales Drive, 480 meters north of Strandher Drive to Hunt Club Road reconstruction project be increased by 4.7 million to be funded with tax-supported debt, and be it therefore resolved that the general manager of Corporate Services and City Treasurer be directed to review the projects coming forward as part of the capital closing report to identify the most appropriate method of refinancing this additional authority.
I just want to thank the treasurer for working with Serge Arpan, councillor DeRuz, and Kakish, as well as the Chair of Transportation. I think we had some challenges initially when it was at Transportation, but thanks to the leadership of the Chair, we were able to resolve that to everyone's satisfaction and with the support of the treasurer, so I appreciate that. Councillor Brockington on this motion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, I spoke to the Chair of Transportation Committee and councillor Kakish, and do support what they're moving. I just have a question about the debt that's going to be incurred to finance this. In the, in the future, when the resurfacing was going to be done anyway, will those monies at that time be used to pay off the debt at that point?
No, the intention actually is that when we come forward with the capital close and adjustment report, which is, I think is two months away, at that time, there's debt that's already, we closed projects, and if there's debt authorized on projects that are closed that are in surplus, that debt is eliminated. So I'm looking to offset this new debt with debt that would be eliminated through the closing process, and all of the debt you've already authorized is already within the budget authority.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried. Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor McKenney, please, seconded by councillor Leeper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual notice of motion and motion for the Bank Street Business Improvement Area to host their annual Glow Fair Music Light Art Event, and because our bylaw prohibits road closure before 6:00 PM Monday to Friday, this just will approve the road closure for Bank Street and Gloucester Street from 1:00 PM on Friday to Sunday. So this is a notice of motion for next council, thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor McKenney. Does anyone else have a notice of motion for our next meeting? Motion introduce bylaws. Councillor Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Consulier Monnet, s'il vous plaît.
Yeah, just before that, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, on the bylaws today are the bylaws that are starting our 19th Business Improvement Area, been working with the people in the central part of my ward, with Centrum, sagged to rid that area for some months now, and the deadline for rejection was on Monday, and they didn't object, so this is a bylaw that will implement it, and we'll be having our founding meeting next week.
Good job.
Great, thank you, congratulations.
The motion is that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
On the motion, carried, adoptee. Confirmation by regulation, excusez-moi, de ratification, conseil Wilkinson, appuyé par conseil Monnet.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of March 8, 2017.
Carried. Madam Deputy Clerk, does any, do we have any written inquiries? Adjournment, councillor Wilkinson, please, seconded by conseil Monnet.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of March 8, 2017 be adjourned.
Carried, adoptee. Merci beaucoup, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.